It's the gavel. So what happens is when the, uh, the board president hits the gavel, everybody's like, oh, oh, it's time for us to start the meeting. He had a question. He was asking what the sound was.
Well, good evening, Mel Peters. I'm your 2023 Board President, Chris Norwood. Welcome to the meeting of the Mel Peters Unipod School District Board of Education. We appreciate your attendance and participation in our educating proceedings, which align with the guidelines set forth by the Ralph and Brown Act for open meetings. Tune into our hybrid style meetings online, either on Zoom or YouTube or in person inside our boardroom. Public comments may be made while you're logging to Zoom or Zoom or if you're in person. YouTube, however, is a listen only option. If you're unable to do either of these, please visit our written public comments webpage for instructions on how to submit your written comment. For our virtual audience, you will see instructions for public comment on your screen. Our communication specialist, Scott Forstner, will briefly go over them. For our in-person audience, when your name is called, please go to the podium. Instructions for both are listed on each agenda. These are copies available at the back table, one public comment per person for each item. Our communication specialist will take it from here.
Thank you so much, President Norwood. Uh, so as for our audience who's here today, we have a very large audience. There are green cards in, in the table in between the aisles. If you'd like to make a public comment, just fill those out. Bring them over to me and I'll relay those to the board president. For our online audience, uh, you'll need to be on the Zoom platform. So you, you registered and logged on to Zoom. You're already one step ahead. Um, you will see a hand icon by your name to indicate your request. You'll click on that. We will call on the names in the order they are received. Listen for your name and we will tell you when your audio is active. You'll take yourself off mute and you'll have two minutes to make your public comment. There'll be a clock on the screen. And lastly, we just ask that you be patient. The board president will call on any public comment at the appropriate time. Members of the public may address the board on any agenda that does, on any subject that does not appear on tonight's agenda. However, provisions of the Brown Act, Government Code 54954.2A and Point 3 preclude any action. As an unagendized item, no responses required from the board or district staff and no action can be taken. However, the board may instruct the superintendent to agendize the item for a future meeting. Please note that the Brown Act, Government Code Section 54954.3 prohibits members of the board in commenting or engaging in discussion during the public comment portion of the agenda, except when seeking clarification on a point made by the speaker, provide a reference to staff members for factual information, or request a staff member to report back to the board on any matter at a subsequent meeting. We do provide special accommodations at our board meetings. Any individuals that do require a special accommodation, we ask that you contact the superintendent's office at least two business days in advance and we'll see what we can do. Our meetings are broadcast live on both Zoom and YouTube and they are recorded. Those recordings are stored on our website, www.musd.org and available for viewing at any time. Closed captioning is available on the Zoom function. Click the closed captioning icon and a live transcription will appear on your screen. Lastly, if there are any additional documents that were not part of the agenda, those are public record and available upon request. And back to you, President Norwood.
Thank you, Scott. Um, close session announcements.
In closed session, the board approved the superintendent's recommendation to accept the resignation of a classified supervisor for grounds and transportation.
The board approved the superintendent's recommendation for the certified management position of the principal and chief innovator and new campus programs with a vote of four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Nakka. At this time, is there a motion to review and approve the open session agenda?
Move to approve the open session agenda.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none, motion carries. At this time, I'd like to take role, uh, for our student board reps. Uh, Scott.
Okay, uh, I see at the, the dais, uh, student board rep Rocha.
Here.
Okay, and, uh, student board rep Bhakta.
Here.
And student board rep Sharma. Okay, and she is not here today.
Awesome. At this time, we're on item nine on the agenda, flag salute.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Cadet Petty Officer Verma. Joining me today is Cadet Petty Officer Tranam and Cadet Tranjek. We represent the NJRTC program at Mel Peters High School. Please rise for the flag salute. Take off all hats and hoods and place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and you may be seated.
Thank you, NJ ROTC. Comments from the public? Scott, do we have any comments from the public online?
Uh, we have no hands raised online at this time.
Okay, I'd like to start with, uh, Tom Chiron.
Hello. Uh, thank you. I wanted to make a very brief public comment, even though it's not on the agenda for tonight, regarding the decision to change aftercare programs, uh, that was made a few weeks ago. Uh, first thing I want to say is that for my wife and I as parents in the district, we were very surprised when we found out about the change to the, um, aftercare vendor from, uh, after the bell to, uh, right after school. We were also very surprised to find out that the cost of, uh, after school care was going to more than double. Currently with after the bell, we're paying a little under $2,000 for the, for the year for after the bell, uh, after, after care. Right at school is going to be over $4,600 per year. Um, and that's, that's noted in the email that went out from the district on April 6th, just before spring break. So we were very surprised by that. Uh, I wanted to, uh, just say that I'm, you know, a bit dismayed that a big decision like that was made with so little input. In fact, there was no input other than a quick Google form survey that was sent out during the February break. Uh, my wife and I, both of us didn't notice that email that had gone out. And if we had, we would have not even thought too much about it and understood that it was, uh, as big a change with such a big impact on families as it is. Um, and so I have three requests of the board. Uh, the first is to have, uh, uh, district staff clarify for all parents out there that there are multiple programs available to them. Uh, after the bell is going to be available at least a couple of school sites and also at rec centers around the city. And that's not made clear in the communication from the district on the sixth. It makes it sound like only right after school is going to be available at this much higher cost. That's one. And then the other is just, uh, that when decisions like this are made in the future, for them to be made with a lot more public input. Uh, you know, the, the calendar change that was made was very well communicated, lots of input from the community. But I think something that's just as important, this decision to change aftercare vendors was made. Um, it's not that same level of input. And I would ask that, uh, the board considers how to have more input on these kinds of decisions going forward. Thank you.
Um, Tom, you have one more item? You, your name too, that was three?
Oh, yes, thank you. Uh, yeah. So there is one other request, which is that, uh, just to ask that school sites do consider bringing after the bell in again next year. Uh, you know, this year, I think every elementary school has an onsite after the bell program. As of right now, uh, for the next school year, there's only two, maybe three elementary schools that are going to have it onsite. So like my son, uh, if, if it's not going to end up being in his school, is going to need to walk to another school, uh, for after the bell, which is, um, not, not great and certainly not available to young children as an option, or parents are going to have to shuttle. Uh, and so just a request that schools, uh, strongly consider bringing after the bell back in, even though there's also going to be this right at school, uh, program available.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Uh, superintendent, um, we have note of those three items that he brought up.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Um, next on, uh, speaker card, uh, Suzette Brahman Jim and Robert, Robin James Utigard.
So I have something to say that's more than two minutes. So I have a question, Mr. Norwood. So can, um, our labor rep cede his time or should we share?
Um. Go ahead. We'll figure it out.
All right. Thank you. So I'm Suzette Brahman Jim, President of our CSEA chapter in Mel Peters. And this is Robin James Utigard. He is our CSEA Labor Representative. Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent Jordan and the Executive Cabinet. Currently, the health clerks at the elementary schools, um, are there for the full school day. And there is the possibility this will be reduced to half that time at each site. Additionally, there's the possibility that the much needed second health clerk at Mel Peters High School will be reduced or eliminated. Way before COVID, there had been many discussions regarding the necessity and benefit of the health clerk being president, present at the sites, the full school day, and adding a second health clerk at MHS. Prior to COVID, the health clerk would support two elementary sites, three hours each day. And as we all know, students do not get sick or injured only when the health clerk is present. During COVID, funding came in, which made it possible to increase the health clerk coverage to a full school day and add the second health clerk at the high school. But please keep in mind, the discussion about the need for full school day coverage and the second one at MHS had been brewing long before COVID. Additional responsibilities due to COVID was not the only reason for increasing the site coverage. Several employees hired during that time of the increased funding in, in COVID, and these employees were never told that they were being paid for by temporary funds. And when the funding runs out, they would be at risk of layoff. We do not treat our employees that way. When the health clerk is at the site for the full school day, the employee breaks and lunches can be scheduled so as to not, so as to cover the office and health needs of the students during high volume times, such as recess and student lunch. And even though tasks related to COVID are diminishing, the students continue to experience increased sickness and mental health and anxiety-related issues. The health office must be available for our students at all times. The health clerk also provides clerical support in the office when the secretary is absent or additional hands are needed. The reduction of health clerk hours at the sites would impact our students and the smooth operation of our school offices. The funds used to increase the health clerk's support ends this school year. This funding also supported other certificated and management positions in the district, but only the classified staff seemed to be affected by its cessation. As an example, a portion of the salary for assistant principals was paid by the COVID funds, and the district has found a way to manipulate the budget to cover over $1 million and post for two new elementary assistant principals. Several other new administrative positions have also been posted. So even though the district can find the money to increase administration, it cannot find the funds to keep our health clerks at the elementary sites for the full school day and a second health clerk at Mel Peters High School. We will be forced to return to a staffing model, which was ineffective and did not give our students the support they need, nor the office staff the support they need. We implore the district to find a way to continue supporting the students and our school offices by keeping our health clerks as they are currently positioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, are there any additional public comments?
Uh, yeah, we did receive a few written public comments. Um, so I'd like to read those for um, those residents. Uh, first one is Kenny Gong of Berkshire Place, and he has children over at Weller. And let's see, I'm really shocked the district changed to a new company without much input from the community. The new company right at school, out of state for profit company, costs more than double of ATB. The sliding fee schedule will help some families, but a lot of families do not qualify. And with this extra cost in after school program, a lot of families will struggle to make ends meet. I'm guessing from Yvonne's email, this switch is a done deal. I'm really disappointed in the board for passing this without much community input discussion. Next one is from Tina Lau of Homeway in Mel Peters, also children at Weller. I am extremely frustrated, disappointed by the lack of communication and transparency in the changing the after school program. I understand the new program offers more services, but it will double the cost and leave behind many families. There was no family engagement beforehand, just vague, one vague survey about after school care sent during a school break with no hint that the program would change or that costs would skyrocket. There has been no opportunity to provide meaningful feedback. In speaking with staff, it sounds like the change is a done deal and there is nothing that families can do to influence what is happening. So all I can do is ask that in the future, please engage with impacted families when such big changes are being considered. Uh, and then I have Tim Craig, Stathian Naranon Viremani, and then Tom Jaron, who also spoke, all Weller families, all speaking on that same issue.
Thank you, Scott. Superintendent, you already have to, we've already given direction on that. Awesome. Thank you. For the, uh, for, for the, for the, uh, parents who spoke on that issue, we appreciate your feedback. Um, and it will be turned over to the, uh, it has been turned over to the superintendent and the superintendent will communicate, um, uh, with her staff, with the staff to make sure that, uh, all the messages are heard. And there is, um, a, a clear understanding of how we're able to move forward, um, on this item with the consideration that you guys have in mind. So thank you for coming here and sharing that information. It's very important for us to hear. We appreciate it. Item 11 on our agenda, the MUSD strategic goals. We will go down the right as far as, um, uh, announcing the strategic goal, starting with Vice President Minno.
Build a culture of "we" that engages parents, staff and community partners in supporting student success.
Improve communication systems for better outreach to parents, students and staff.
Develop educational pathways that allow students to apply their passion and learning for their future careers.
Focus service, focus services and support systems to ensure that all students are engaged in learning and making and are making social, emotional and academic gains.
And number five, identify creative, student-focused strategies that accommodate enrollment growth and ensure healthy learning environments. Item 12 on our agenda, superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Norwood. And yes, I have received the information, uh, from our speakers and will, uh, have already started speaking with the staff about how we can remedy the communication gap and make things better for the future, as well as making sure that our parents know of other options available for aftercare and what we can do in particular at Weller. I've been in conversation with Principal Satan, as well as Executive Director, uh, Priti Jahar. Sorry. Thank you, Principal Elsie. I'll get it. Uh, I would like to first start with our recognitions. And, uh, Curtner Elementary School, we heard from, actually, we recognized them a couple of months ago because of their great work and the math competition that was a national competition. And we have them again here tonight, this time for Odyssey of the Mind. And in Odyssey of the Mind, the students participate as teams, again, against, uh, teams in other parts of the country. And, uh, our particular group of students have ranked second, third and fourth place in their different grade levels. So we would like to invite all of the students from Odyssey of the Mind, as well as as well as the chair of the program. And this is a parent and staff, uh, example of collaboration that greatly benefits kids. And the chair is Sarita Parsayya. And we would like, uh, to invite you to come up. And if you have the names of all the students, we would love for you to be able to share that. And if not, in addition to that, um, share a bit about the experience that the kids overall have had with this Odyssey of the Mind. And I'm going to go ahead and ask all of you to come up.
Thank you, Board. Thank you, uh, everyone. There are thirty-two kids.
Thirty-two students. And, uh, let's have you all come up, along with our principal, Mr. Slaven, and any staff members or other parents who are here, because it takes all of us to support our kiddos.
So, uh, this is the first time Curtner participated in Odyssey of the Mind. Uh, we have, we were able to get five teams and thirty-two, uh, kids participated in this. This program not only includes, uh, kids, but the parents also. And I thanks to all five teams' coach and co-coach who worked day and night for continuous four months to do this happen. Um, this program is from, like, we had team from Kinder to grade fifth. Kinder to second grade are non-participating, but still not competitive. But they are participating just to enhance their skills in team working, creative thinking and preparing for the competitions once they reach the grade third. So, uh, I think Coach is the one who knows all the kids, so I would like to invite them. Uh, Dipthi, and, uh, Anjina, Vasanti, Prachithi and, uh, Sandarya, please. Um, I would also like to call all the parents who have, like, worked hard with this. With the kids are also working, parents are also working after office hours. So, um, thank you to all the parents, if you'd like to join us. Um, one last thing, uh, there is one team, uh, which stood second in regional and second place in state competition. They are going next month for world final, in which twenty-two countries is participating. I would like to give this to Prachithi. She is the coach of the team and she did a great job. Prachithi.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarita. So.
Come on, come on, all the parents. Come.
Thank you. I just uh, I just want to take some time and mention that this team is going to Michigan in May. And we would like uh, every parent, everyone who's here to donate, because it's not going to be uh, you know, uh, it's not going to be easy for us to just go and fly and take seven kids. Uh, they are minors, so parents also have to go with them, so there are going to be forty-one, fourteen of us to go to Michigan and make Kurtner and MUSD proud. Like, we've come a long way. You know, we've uh, you know, we stood second in regionals, stood second in states. We want to do the same thing. In Michigan, there are going to be at least twenty countries. And, you know, all other US states are going to participate. So it's going to be a really big competition. Uh, it's going to be a three-day event, just like uh, sports Olympics. Uh, you know, with opening and uh, ending ceremony. So it's going to be huge, a very good opportunity for kids to learn. Uh, so I hope that everyone here can go on GoFundMe.com and search for Kurtner Elementary. We've created a GoFundMe page, so please go and donate so that we can go and make MUSD and Kurtner proud. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, I recognize a group of our Randall students who are led by Ms. Naya Ancheta. Naya decided Naya decided that she wanted to make a difference here in her school and create a Randall cleanup crew. So she spoke with some of her other um, student colleagues and other classes in addition to hers, and those other colleagues that she recruited are Leslie Garnica. So if we could have Naya, if you could come up, and Leslie, please come up. We also have Olivia Butternut and Leila Gutierrez. And Leila Gutierrez. And could we also have your uh, principals and other staff members and family members? Because, Naya, I would like you to share with everybody how not only did you get your colleagues to help you, but you got a whole community behind you to do this. So can you tell us how you did that?
Hola, mi nombre es Naya. Hi, my name is Naya. I got a group of kids to help me um, in a cleaning day. Um, the thing that inspired me was when I was in kindergarten, and there used to be trash everywhere, so I just used to just um, just kind of look around, just find it and throw it away. And then I had some friends help me too. So they just grew on me, and then now my best friends helped me have a cleaning day. Hola, mi nombre es Naya. Tenía una día de limpieza. Um, y, y cuando estaba pequeño en kinder fue, um, fue a, um, había uh, mucho basura uh, en el suelo, entonces limpió eso y agarró a mis amigas y le ay, ayudó a mí, y eso es como y mis amigas um, estaban conmigo en la día de limpieza y cómo hizo.
Mi nombre es Olivia. Uh, la idea de limpieza fue de Naya, y solo ella se, me preguntó si quiero hacerlo. Mi, unas de mis mejores amigas me preguntó a hacer algo, y esa es la más importante cosa que puedo hacer. Uh, my name is Olivia and um, one of my uh, best friends asked me to do something, which was doing the cleaning day. It was her idea, and um, since she was one of my best friends, that was one of the best things I could do.
Which is gracious.
Okay, so we have a special request from our Kurtner Odyssey of the Mind team. They have a special trophy, and they know that eventually they are going to be learners at Milpitas High School. And they went to present to our Milpitas High School administrative team a trophy that they won. They want you to have it. So if we could have you come up, please, our Milpitas High School administrators.
Good morning.
Who wants to be your, our spokesperson to talk about this trophy? Okay.
Um, my name is Anya Igerker. Um, I am part of the Kurtner Elementary Problem, Odyssey of the Mind Problem Two team. Um, we won this trophy at the state, at the state tournament. We came second place. Um, to be honest, we, we weren't really expecting to get this far in this tournament. It was just something that that I, that I found out a couple, like, like last year. Um, and, well. And Paul, um, I, I've gotten real, well, we, we've gotten really close um, over this competition, over this, like, over this competition. We've become really good friends. We've, we've met so many amazing people who've helped us get, get to this point. So um, we're really happy, we're really happy and excited and proud for our school and our team for what we're about to do next in this competition.
You're welcome. All right. Take care, everybody.
So for those of you that are new to MUSD board meetings, one of the things that we do every board meeting is that we celebrate our children. We celebrate their efforts. We celebrate our parents. We celebrate the community. Um, to recognize the fact that um, that it is important to recognize our youth and the development that they have in the academic, athletic, um, musical, um, and any other area where we can recognize that the fact that our children are headed in the right direction and that they have the full community support of not only uh, the parents and the teachers, but the Board of, but the Board of Education, the administrators, and the leaders of community.
President Norwood, I have a exciting announcement. Uh, we have been looking for a person to lead Milpitas High School and also the Milpitas High School Extension at the MUSD Innovation Campus, which is in the works. And uh, after almost seven months of trying to find that person, we determined that we needed to use a recruiter. And the recruiter, recruiters spoke to over forty different administrators across California looking for people who are currently high school principals and who have had secondary experience. They spoke with thirty different possible candidates. They Google searched things such as innovative high school principal in order to find candidates to bring to the district. And they ultimately ended up with twenty applicants. And from those twenty applicants, we had uh, two who rose to the top. And it was an extremely difficult decision of which of the two would be the person that we would uh, identify as the person to lead Milpitas High School into the next uh, era. Uh, along with our MUSD uh, ex-innovation campus with the Milpitas High School Extension. And that person I would like to introduce, and I'll ask you to come up to the podium, Greg, is Greg Wolman. And as he's coming up, I'll share a little bit of his background. Uh, so Greg has been in education for quite a while. And he began his career in a different state. Uh, I think it was, was it Arkansas or Michigan? Thank you, Minnesota. And Minnesota, where he taught uh, visual arts and to multiple students in secondary uh, from sixth grade through twelfth grade. He also uh, spent time in Las Vegas high schools and middle schools. And in Las Vegas High School, it's where he began his, in one of the high schools there, it's where he began his administrative career as an assistant principal. And from there, he decided to go on a great adventure and went to Alaska, where he was a principal of a couple of different uh, programs, all dealing with high school. And uh, he shared with me that it was difficult for his predecessor, predecessors because they generally only lasted about a year to a year and a half, because it was very difficult for them to gain the trust of those that they were um, going to be working with. Because as you can imagine, in a very uh, secluded area of Alaska where uh, you need oftentimes a plane in order to come in. And he described times when the plane would arrive and drop food and supplies, that people are very skeptical of those who come from the outside. However, uh, Greg won their trust and was there for six years. He led them through a few crises, one of which was when the high school burnt down, had to provide uh, continuity of education, which we here in Milpitas Unified are very familiar with. And within three days, they discovered a way to um, make the use of one of the elementary schools so that it was alive for twelve hours a day, similarly to what we would like to do with our MUSD Innovation Campus. And they held high school in the late afternoon and evenings. From there, he uh, found his way to Tahoe Truckee, which is where he is currently, leading several uh, small high school programs that are about seven hundred square miles apart from each other. And even given that great distance, what uh, the recruiters found and the many people that they spoke to, as well as myself and speaking to the superintendent, is that Greg is still visible in every classroom. He knows the students by name, and he makes himself available at all times. Uh, he is somebody who is looking for a place like Milpitas that he can call home for a very long time. He understands that Milpitas High School has been through several transitions in the last years and is in need of somebody who's going to invest themselves in the community. And he's ready and excited about doing that. He said that one of the things that drew his attention to Milpitas Unified was our culture of "we", as well as the different pathways that we described in strategic goal number three, and seeing how that played out in things such as our middle college, middle college, high school. And uh, he has had a variety of things that he's done over the years outside of school that lend themselves to his ability to uh, look at things systematically and identify ways to improve them. He's also identified how to build uh, the trust of community. And he has uh, spearheaded a pathway in the area of fire and uh, forestry response, and is now seeing the learners who have graduated from that program coming back as role models for other students. Uh, there's so many different stories that I heard about how he goes out of his way um, to drive kids to school, take them to interviews, um, even make sure that they have meals uh, when they, their families couldn't afford it. So uh, Greg, I'd like to welcome you to MUSD, and would like to now give you a moment to say um, some words to the board. But first, I would also like to demonstrate one more thing about him, is he's in Tahoe, as I said, and every interview, uh, he came down in person. And even today, when I called him at eleven-thirty AM to offer the position to him, I said, you know, we can have you speak to the board by Zoom, and he said, I really think it's important that I'm here in person. And so he made the drive. really think it's important that I'm here in person. And so he made the drive. And here he is. Great.
Thank you. Hello and good evening, everyone. I'm very honored to be here and accept this position. Thank you to Superintendent Jordan for believing in me and all of our conversations and the board, the executive cabinet, all the interview committees, and some of those, some of you that are here now, thank you for, I think you believe in me. So thank, thank you for the committees that, uh, I know it's a lot of work, so thank you. And Milpitas High School, uh, and the Unified School District have so many excellent components that was very attractive to me. And all those components of what you do and what you'll be doing in the near future. And I'm grateful to be a part of that. I'm looking forward to focusing on your strategic goals. And I know you listed them already, but I think it's important to keep saying them and keep it in our conversation, that your strategic goals by not only building a culture of we, but sustaining it, improving communication systems, better outreach to our families, our students, our parents, our staff, developing and in, increase educational pathways to make sure we stay relevant for all of our students, ensuring that our systems allow us to focus on the whole child and include social, emotional, and academic growth with all of our students, identifying creative and student-focused strategies to accommodate enrollment growth and ensure healthy learning environments for all students. I'm more than excited to get started with all of you. Special thank, thank you to all of you here and those that participated in the process with me and supported me. And a thank to all my colleagues back in Tahoe that have been supporting me and my family out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And we look forward to getting to work very soon.
Very soon.
All right. So next, I'd like to do my superintendent's state of the district update. We have, uh, just one slide tonight to give us our update on the status of COVID. As you can see in our county, it is medium. We have had an increase in cases of, uh, COVID since the last report, which was March twenty eighth, by about fifty-three students and thirteen staff. We are no longer, uh, automatically sending tests home, although I will mention, because we're very proud of this, that we've sent home over a hundred and thirty-three thousand test kits this year. And our test kits are available for families. Uh, the state has given us that green light that we can now give those to the families of our, um, staff members, as well as the families of our students. So if you would like, uh, COVID tests for your family at any time, please just go to your school, uh, staff or for our staff members to your supervisor, and we will make sure that you have those test kits. Along the lines of safety first, I would like to share that this summer, our safety, uh, projects around fencing will be highlighted at these four schools, Burnett, Palmory, Randall, and Zanker. And Scott, thank you, has designed this, uh, safety update icon for each of the principals of those schools so that they can send those home to families to, to make them aware that fencing will be going up. This is very exciting. Phase one of the MUSD Innovation Campus is, uh, coming along quite nicely, as you can see here in these two pictures. And I will show you, uh, current overhead video. And all of this is available on our website. So you could see, uh, you actually see the employees working there. You can see that, uh, they have the interior that they're working on, drywall starting to go up, windows are in place, and flooring is also coming into play. And the plan is that, I think it's June tenth, somewhere in that timeline, all of those who are occupying the buildings that will become phase two, you see these three buildings here to the left, those will be demolished, uh, at the end of June, beginning of July. So all of our employees who worked through the summer will be working either at home or in other, uh, offices throughout the district. Plan is that, that's interesting. Um, and phase one will be open for the new school year in the fall. And our students of Calaveras Hills High School will be moving into the building temporarily that's located on Calaveras Boulevard. Our adult learners will be moving into the building that you saw that was being built on the parking lot side, along with our district office staff. And then phase two will open the fall of twenty twenty-four. And our learners from Milpitas High School will then occupy, uh, the building that's along Calaveras Boulevard. And phase three, we want to have open in twenty twenty-five at the latest, that will house our Workforce Development Center and Early Childhood Education Research Center. So we're well on our way with our MUSD Innovation Campus. And that concludes the superintendent's date of the district.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan. Um, prior to moving on to, uh, Superintendent's Executive Cabinet reports, I do have an ask of the folks that are sitting way in the back. Uh, we do have seats available in the front. If you would be so kind to move up, uh, that would be really appreciated.
And while they're moving up, I would like to ask our middle college, high school, um, team to prepare for their report. Ah, that is our management team. It's so good to see you all here.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. As we usually have a very intimate setting. And so for you guys to be so far back, we're not sure we can project ourselves on here very clearly. So I do appreciate everyone, uh, who moved up. Really appreciate it.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Carissa Scott, and I am the principal of the Milpitas Middle College High School. Thank you so much for this opportunity to provide you with an update on the development of Milpitas's newest high school, Milpitas Middle College. This year, we have added grade twelve. We have earned full WASC accreditation. We've also earned approval, A through G approval for all of our courses. And we look forward to celebrating the graduation of our first founding class this June. Um, we are also right now hoping to come to you to share a little bit about, well, last year around this time, we came to you to discuss about our innovative approach to developing a brand new curriculum, community, and culture. And tonight, we want to take a moment to talk about how those intersect in our capstone, community impact project that all students at the middle college take part in. So I have some staff and students here to share that with you.
A little too tall for me. Mrs. Mandy Lau Manluko, English Honors educator. Uh, for those of you guys who are unfamiliar with our community service, our community impact project, or capstone, it's a two-year project that allows students to pursue their passions and increase their civic engagement by addressing a student-identified issue within society. For students, their community impact projects can change over time. They can alter them completely, or they can evolve them by refining their original topic. This is an example of the middle college tenant, which displays the growth mindset of learning and inquiry.
I'm Adrian Deng, a senior at Milpitas Middle College. Big, Big and Little is my fall twenty twenty-two project, to have real people share real experiences. The first slide there. Thank you. Um, so the importance of this project, so the whole idea behind it is real people share real experiences to help ease the academic and social stresses of, for students when moving to a new school. My project model that I came up with, as you can see on the screen there, has three levels of experience sharing. I used social media like LinkedIn and Instagram to reach out to and invite specific students to, from different majors, to share their perspectives on their college experience and their application process. Within a short time, I was able to schedule sixteen students, which is half of the speakers that responded to my invitation, all from nine UCs, Stanford, Santa Clara, SoCal, and SJSE. One measure of success that is evident on the slide there, as you can see with the green check marks next to the graph, um, these indicate the schools that my peers were accepted to from middle college. More information about my project is, uh, listed is in the addendum. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Michael Makatang. I teach, uh, honors, social studies. Um, we're very proud of Adrian, and we do hope to continue Adrian's good work. Uh, now that we have anticipate our first graduating class, we'll have a pool of known students who we can, um, continue in the same vein as Adrian's Big Little Project. As we collect contacts from our graduating class, we plan on inviting them back to our school, um, and share their experience with our community. Uh, we hope it will be especially impactful as relationships were already fostered. Additionally, one of the structural components built into our school, um, is our advisory period. Uh, this period housed Adrian's, um, project, but also gives us the space to provide supports for our students, um, such as access to information, such as financial aid, college application process, scholarships, and internships.
Hi, my name is Amy Alanis, and I am a junior at the Milpitas Middle College High School. While I am currently exploring different career options, I know that I want to be a mentor and develop skills necessary to be a leader in whichever fields I choose. I enjoy helping others. And when I was younger in middle school, I also needed guidance and support to reach my potential. These are some of the reasons I chose to participate in the middle school tutoring and mentoring. I am working with Alexa and Tiana, two seventh grade students at Rancho Middle School. I think the most valuable thing I've been able to provide is helpful mentorship and advocacy. Many middle school students do not feel comfortable asking for help or can feel intimidated by adults, but these students know that they can count on me every Tuesday to provide them with a safe and comfortable place to get whatever assistance or advice they need. I can also give them insight into high school and help them feel prepared and less nervous about the future.
Thank you so much for your attention, and we are ready to address any questions that you have for us.
I'm Ms. Scott.
Hi.
One of the things that I really admire about, uh, the middle college is the opportunity for students to really attempt and go try to solve real-world problems. And I think having that, um, your capstone project, that concept allows the students to really find out what they're made of and what strengths and weaknesses they still have to work on. And I think it's an excellent way to, to measure your students as they graduate from the middle college. So I want to thank you and congratulate, especially the seniors. That's a great project. I'm looking forward to seeing a whole lot more projects from the middle college. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other comments from members of the board, which also includes the student board reps as well?
Thank you so much for coming and presenting those. Uh, both of those projects are really, um, current today. Um, and, and you're really helping bridge a, a future generation and hopefully, uh, create future success at the middle college as well, because these students will be more prepared, uh, coming into your shoes now, today. So thank you so much for sharing the projects and hope you, uh, hope for your continued success.
So I heard the graduation first. Is that on our calendar already?
Oh, yes, it is.
We are super looking forward to that. And congratulations to all the hard work to get, to get this far. Um, launching the college, uh, um, developing the staff, um, outreach to the students and creating a learning environment for them that is new, that is innovative, that is exciting, and that is truly engaging. And that is definitely what you display here tonight. So really appreciate your leadership. And thank you, students and educators, for being here and sharing your stories. Thank you very much.
Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Ms. Wendy John, for your report.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Good evening, everyone. I have two reports to share tonight. The first is from our Maintenance Operation and Transportation Department. I'm very excited to share that our new MOT director will start on May eighth. And we are very grateful and appreciate that our Maintenance Operation Transportation Supervisors, Abner Ames and Jesus Chigoya stepped up during this transition period. They're doing their best to keep the operation running smoothly. And also Jared Acosta in MOT was willing to assist the transportation of grounds while we're having the supervisor positions vacancy. Our Human Relations Department has been actively recruiting to fill in this vacant position, and we appreciate their effort as well. My next report is on our bond oversight, uh, committee. The quarterly meeting is coming up. It'll be on Wednesday, April twenty-sixth at the district office. We will tour the Innovation Campus as our normal practice to start the meeting. And you are all welcome to attend and to learn the latest updates on our bond projects. That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. Now we'll skip down to Assistant Superhuman Relations, Jonathan Brunson.
Never know who she's gonna pick next. So, um, I'll make it brief. Uh, you know, with our new hire for our, uh, principal of Milpitas High School and, and the programs that we're gonna have at the center, I just wanted to give a shout out to the admin team and the staff, uh, at Milpitas High School. You have stepped up on a daily basis to support our students and each other all year. And, uh, you deserve special recognition for that. Uh, leadership matters. Um, having a community and teamwork matters. And it shows when you look at the faces of our students at our high school, our comprehensive high school. So just, uh, just wanted to say thank you, uh, for a year of support.
And that concludes my report. Hope that the rest of you guys get claps after yours.
Our Executive Directors of Learning and Development, Priti Jahari and Raju Derpinghast.
Good evening, everybody. On April, on April second is World Autism Day. And this kicks off a month of, uh, National Autism and Neurodivergent Awareness Month. So we encourage everybody to, uh, join us in our efforts to increase awareness of how neurodiverse individuals' strengths and talents improve the world, uh, for everybody, as well as, as we work through this, it increases acceptance of all neurodiverse individuals. And for those of you who are unfamiliar with the term neurodivergent, it is a non-medical umbrella term, uh, that captures, um, and describes people who have various neurological or developmental, uh, conditions such as attention deficit, uh, learning disabilities, um, learning differences, uh, cognitive functioning, autism, and, and other disorders like that. And so later this evening, if you're, um, leaving early, do chime back in to check out our board resolution, which was completed by, um, our post-secondary students in, uh, Dave Sorensen and Angela Dove's post-secondary class, as those students are leading and helping to increase our awareness as they've created the board resolution for this evening. I'll turn it over to you, Executive Director Jahari.
Good evening. Uh, so over spring break, we hosted April Acceleration Academy. We had over a hundred and fifteen TK to sixth grade students from across the district hosted right here at Randall Elementary, as well as thirty-five Calaveras Hill students participating in project-based learning units. In addition, um, to having extended opportunities to build academic vocabulary, their math and science skills through project-based learning, they also match these, this academic learning with critical thinking, problem solving, and collaboration. Ultimately, students reported ninety percent satisfaction with the program, and parents reported over ninety percent satisfaction with the curriculum. Um, working in groups and creating a product, product were major contributors to what made the learning relevant and meaningful for students. So a huge thank you to our certificated and classified team members who all made this possible, um, choosing to work during their week off. Um, and I was just And as just your presentation, Miss Scott, was resonating. So I thank you for that as well. I think we are preparing elementary students to be future middle college students through this work. Thank you. This concludes our report.
Thank you.
Board group agreements. The board group agreements are provided for the board's ready reference as a reminder of our conduct. As elected officials per bylaw, per board bylaw nine thousand and one, re-adopted at the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting, board members and the superintendent agreed to keep learning and achievement for all students as their primary focus. Ask questions for their own understanding, be open and honest with each other, no surprises, including unimproved board communications with law enforcement, news media, regional elected officials on behalf of the district and board. Be aware that our behavior in the community reflects on us as a team. Communicate proactively with each other about topics, questions, and challenges in open session and advance to public board meetings in compliance with the Brown Act. Participate in professional development and commit time and energy necessary to be an informed and effective leader. Actively support the culture of we in action deed and opportunity to serve the students and parents of the Mopitas Unified School District. Item fifteen, board communication requests. This part of the agenda provides the board members the opportunity to report on their activities as elected officials, as elected representatives. School board members may request the placement of item on future board agenda, relay information from the community, or request information from staff. The student board representative reports on school, the student board representatives report on school and student activities. Reports are limited into ninety seconds each. Scott, can we start with the student board reps, please?
Okay, let's start with our student board rep from Calaveras Hills High School, Ariana Rocha. Go right ahead.
Hello. So we just did S back testing before break. And April Academy was during spring break and we were able to earn five credits during the giving up our spring break. We had two classes, which were an economic class and English class. I was in the English class and our main objective was how can we use poetry to promote social justice in our community? We did research on poems based on social justice issues that we were personally interested in. And throughout the week, we had two presenters, Bianca, who was a social justice poet, who is a social justice poet. And Lorraine Patterson is from show from love, show in love, who is also a poet. And at the end of the week, we were able to make our own poems based on whatever issues we were interested in. And in the economic class, they made their own business subscription box. They did the finances on how much the subscription boxes would be and how much profit they would make. They created their own logos and boxes with the products inside of it, along with the poster to explain their business. And we are planning on we are planning on visiting two colleges this month, Evergreen Valley, SJCC. And SVCT's shadow days are set up for students interested in attending next year. And softball just started and also Relay for Life is April twenty-ninth. That's it.
Awesome. Great report. We'll move right along. We have student board rep from the Middle College High School, Mara Bokta online. Mara, go right ahead with your report.
Hi, school board and various community members present here today. This week, our student government is hosting a spirit week that allows our students to have fun as we approach the final weeks of the school year. We are also hosting student government elections with over fifty percent of our current junior class expressing interest in getting involved in student government. Before spring break, all of our students were able to attend a Cal Hills Career Day, where many of our students were able to meet with professionals in the field that they're interested in. Many of our students enjoyed learning about work ethic with Mr. Norwood and other fields like social work with Mrs. Stice. Our progress reports have just been due and we are in our final progress period. Finally, we are looking forward to our school's very first graduation plans, like mentioned previously, which is on June ninth and has been planned by our admin, which includes Miss Scott, Mr. Makatangai, Miss Blau. And a lot of our seniors have been able to input and make suggestions as to what they want to see in the graduation ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you, Mara, for your report, and that concludes our student board reports.
Thank you. Board member Sean.
Thank you. So I'll just leave it to my top three items for over last few weeks. I want to give a special shout out to the Santa Clara County Board meeting, which today recognize my wife's passing. I also want to thank the my family here, the board, the executive cabinet, community for the tremendous support as we make this transition. I also attended Alex Lee's Unsung Heroes Ceremony last Friday. And I wanted to also let people know that we finish our initial work on candidates for the chancellor for the San Jose Evergreen Community College District. That is all.
Thank you. Board member Nakka.
Good evening, everybody. I do not have much to say because I was not in the country. I was traveling. I just got back last weekend. So I did miss a lot of events, although I attended the twenty-ninth annual crab feed of the Mopitas Chamber of Commerce alongside trustee Yip Chan. So it was a grand success last weekend. So that's pretty much from my end. That concludes my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Board Member Nakka. Vice President Minho.
Thank you, President Norwood. As far as community activities, I attended the Trojan Olympics. I also attended the Santa Clara County School Boards Association meeting. One of the presentations there that they shared was in regards to a climate resilient California school. And so they talked about how to modernize campuses to be a greener campus. A lot of that is in the works in the California Schools Master Plan. So one of the target dates is twenty thirty as far as the first steps in regards to any future modernizations of campuses or building campuses. What I do appreciate is the team here working on the innovation campus because a lot of that has already been implemented in our innovation campus, high school that's being built. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. And I'll yield my time. Item sixteen, reports, superintendent's items, sixteen, AI or A1.
Thank you, President Norwood. I would like to invite Tom Williams of EPC. He has been working with Mopitas Unified School District to do our enrollment projections for over thirty years. And with COVID, we were very curious to see how that impacts or changes the projections prior to COVID. And so Mr. Williams is ready to share that information with us this evening.
The short answer is you're doing a lot better than everybody else. Some districts like Cupertino have literally lost thousands of students. So it's it's been a crazy time throughout the Bay Area. And you're one of the very, very few districts I'm aware of that didn't take a pretty significant, well, a more significant hit in the last three years. In fact, you're the only district I know that actually grew from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty.
Tom, could you do us a favor? Could you give us a little bit of your background and share who you are? That would be very helpful. Thank you.
I've been doing this since nineteen eighty-five. You're my first client. Way I do analyses is by driving in my first state for district, literally every block, every street to divide the district up into planning areas, which let me analyze where the kids are coming from and the trends by those types. Not because I care if a kid is rich or poor, because I get a sense of where the enrollment is or is not changing. You can evaluate each of those trends for the likelihood to continue by degree. I've now worked done, I've lost track of a number of studies, but I've done over four hundred studies from more than seventy school districts. I've worked for the majority of the districts in this county. I've worked for the majority of the districts in San Mateo County. I've worked for districts all over the state. I don't do that anymore. I don't want to go up and down the state and playing fights anymore. I used to have a client in the state of Washington even, but it's always nice to come back to Mopitas because it's where it all started for me. The type of analysis I do, I think, is more in-depth than anybody else doing demographic studies. I am looking at where your kids are coming from, not just looking at the district-wide trends. And in this district's case, you have some mixed numbers, but the trends are really way better than just about everywhere else. The adjacent Berriest District, I did a study for last fall and they're coming down significantly. Oak Grove's coming down significantly. Mount Pleasant's coming down significantly. As I just mentioned, Cupertino's come down hugely. So for your numbers to have come down just a little bit and have been basically flat from last year to this year is a real positive of this district and how desirable this district is that people are holding out here when they're not in a lot of other school districts during the COVID era. Now on that note, if you don't mind Chris, to go to the first slide. Okay, this is essentially our report. It's slightly abbreviated, but I'll just read it real quickly. The Mopitas Unified School District has had periods of large enrollment gains and losses since nineteen ninety-three. And continuing the latest trends may have seemed likely within each of those eras, but that shift always eventually occurred. Such a shift is what we're projecting for the pending total. Pandemic was a key factor in the decline by four hundred and twenty-five students since twenty twenty, but all but sixty-five occurred in twenty twenty-one during the worst of the pandemic's impacts. The much larger decline this year occurred as those impacts eased. With the pandemic, expect to be even less of a factor in the future. The only further impact of the pandemic may even have lowered it lowered the birth totals in subsequent five years later kindergarten enrollments. I am a little bit worried about that. Some of your birth numbers are down and the rate at which you're getting kids five years later in kindergarten from births are down. Those low kindergarten totals will then graduate upwards to the other grades. I'll say in these low kindergarten amounts, however, will be both much larger TK enrollments as TK eligibility expands and significant student numbers coming from new housing. Now going on the second bullet, these most offsetting factors create a relatively stable projected total enrollment over the next five years. You're unique at that of all my clients. The forecast has added twelve students in twenty twenty-three and a net of only ten more students to twenty twenty-four. Slightly larger, but offsetting project differences in the following three years create a net change by only eight students over the next five years. Now, obviously, when you go out five years, that could be plus or minus two hundred kids easily. But the bottom line is compared to the changes that happened in recent years, I'm expecting a relatively stable enrollment. On the third bullet, moderately larger changes are forecast to the three grade levels. The next change, the net changes forecast to twenty twenty-five are a hundred and fifty-seven more elementary students, sixty-eight additional middle school students, and a hundred and nineteen fewer high school students. The phased expansion of TK is the cause of the elementary increase. Otherwise, elementary would have been detected decline as well. Now in the last bullet, there are notable divergences forecast in the resident homeschool K six totals relevant to elementary schools. By resident, I mean where your kids live, regardless of which year school they attend. Marcus attendance area adds sixty-eight K six students in twenty twenty-three and a cumulative a hundred and seventy-five the next three years. That doesn't even include TK. Five other attendance areas by contrast each lose forty to fifty-eight K six students to twenty twenty-five. Now those other five ten series won't go down by that much because they'll be adding TK increase. They'll still be going down while Matos is going way up. And then this continues to trend, it's been going on in this district for several years. Next slide, please. This just shows what your enrollment did since nineteen ninety-three, nineteen ninety-three is as far back as the data goes on the CDE website. Actually have numbers going back far enough from your district, but I want to stick with the CD numbers because they're a clear number to show. And you'll see from nineteen ninety-four to nineteen ninety-seven, your enrollment soared. And people at that time thought it was going to continue soaring. No, it turned right about around. It went straight back down. Then it bounced around for a few years before it soared from twenty-six to twenty fourteen. Then it bounced around for a bit and came way down in the pandemic. So you've already, you haven't had a steady trend really in a lot of these periods other than from two thousand and six to twenty fourteen. And when I look forward for the next five years, as you see in those dotted red lines, it really doesn't show much change like it happened. You know, that's similar to what happened after the peak in twenty fourteen. It bounced around for a few years before it started to come down. Next slide, please. Okay, I break up your enrollment into elementary and middle school, excuse me, elementary and secondary because easier to show the numbers on the table. This is slightly complex table. I'm going through very several aspects of. The first thing I do, the column on the right, you'll see the numbers boxed in pink. Back in October twenty fifteen, you had a total of the elementary level of fifty-four hundred kids. That fell down to fifty-three hundred thirty-four, a slight drop by twenty eighteen, and then bounced back up from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty. Again, you're the only district I know of that gained from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. Most districts lost huge numbers in that year as the pandemic hit. But since twenty twenty, you've come down to fifty-three seventy-eight. And you'll see in the the row highlighted in lavender, you gained seventeen kids in net from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty. And you lost a hundred ninety-three in net in twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, but most of that occurred before the last year. When I deal with the columns on the left, you'll see highlighted in sort of a beige brown is the kindergarten numbers. I want to point out that back in October twenty nineteen, October twenty twenty, those are around eight hundred kids. The two previous years are fairly high too, especially in twenty seventeen. And that created a bubble of four grades that are now in grades two through five highlighted in rows to have relatively large student numbers. You now have had two years in a row of much smaller kindergarten enrollments, which is now kindergarten in first grade. You know that this year is six seventy compared to eight hundred two years ago. So that's a huge shift. Partly offsetting the overall total by the gain in TK, but not by much. So when I look forward in the forecast, I got those four large student numbers now grades second through fifth, being in grades third through sixth next year. In other words, you still have four large classes at the elementary level. And with the growth in TK, and I think everybody here knows what the reason that is, especially TK to additional months going to year round in twenty twenty-five, I have you forecast to gain seventy-seven kids at the elementary level next year. After next year, TK will continue to grow, but you'll also start to lose some of those four largest classes highlighted in rows. In October twenty twenty-four, you'll only have three of those classes. October twenty-five, you'll only have two of those classes. Matching the loss of the large classes has been the growth in TK, which in twenty twenty-five will be a full year of eligibility. So after twenty twenty-five, you're not adding more months of eligibility to TK. TK becomes basically a flat number after twenty twenty-five, which comes down slightly for reasons I'll explain in the birth rate. So after twenty twenty-five, as those last little rose card classes graduated in the middle schools and TK doesn't grow anymore, you'll see that I shift from a peak of a growth by a hundred fifty-seven students there in the lower right part in three years to a net decline by thirty-eight over five years.
Oh, could you repeat that one, please?
Sure. In the bottom, you'll see in highlighted in yellow and orange, growth over the next three years is a net of a hundred fifty-seven more kids. After twenty twenty-five, you'll then have no further growth at TK and you'll start losing the last of those rose card classes from sixth grade. And that's why it goes from gaining under fifty-six kids in net for the next three years to a net of minus thirty-eight in five years. Now again, minus thirty-eight, five years out, that could easily turn into being minus a hundred or plus fifty. It's but the point is, we're not looking at a lot of change compared to what's happened in the recent past. Does that make sense to everybody? Now, I want to emphasize.
You can't, you can't ask a question. Does that make sense to everybody and not give us a chance to go ahead on that, right? So we'll take a pause. There are any questions from any of the board members? Thank you. So all of your projections for Mopitas Unified School District, and I understand your history, it has all been based of, you've been here since you said ninety?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five?
Eighty-five.
Okay. Is all based on birth rate and the locations where those birth rates is occurring within the city of Mopitas?
Birth rate, I can't break down by any further than the district as a whole.
Okay.
Because you'll see in a later chart, when I compare what's happening in kindergarten compared to what's happening in the birthday to district-wide compared to the tenant areas, it's clear that the gain in births, and we'll get to this in a later slide, has been concentrated heavily in the Matos Attendance area.
Okay.
And the otherwise, the birth data has probably been either flat or declining in the rest of the district.
Okay, so if I translate, you're saying that the the Matos area is what is allowing us to either stay pretty much maintain steady in terms of our enrollment rate and also the addition of TK to the equation in comparison to other districts.
Correct.
In any of your work, do you factor in the growth in the region in terms of private school opportunities at the K six level or the K five level?
If the current ratio of public versus private is likely to stay relatively close, not perfect in balance, but relatively close, then whatever trends I'm getting from the public school enrollment, I figure should continue. Now, if a Stratford opened another school on top of what they've already opened here next year that has six hundred kids, sure, that could change some of the dynamics. But as long as the amount of kids I see coming to the public schools seems fairly consistent from the various neighborhoods, from various housing types, apartments, condos, smaller detached homes, larger detached homes. I don't see a major hit happening to the trends because of the Stratfords. And I figured that that ratio is staying in balance. And what the kids that Stratford is getting, my understanding, about half of them come from outside of Mopitas anyways. So I.
Well, that's not mine. Just so you know, that's not mine. As we visit the Straffers and the other private schools, I see a number of kids from our local community in those schools. So I appreciate the perspective that you have on that one.
Okay. Clearly, it has factored, Stratford schools have factored into your enrollment decline, but again, I have other districts, virtually all of my other client districts. I have other districts, virtually all of my other client districts did not have a new private school open in the last two or three years.
Right.
In fact, they instead had some private schools closing, private high school closed in Santa Clara, for example.
Right.
Catholic High School. And they're having worse trends than your district by far.
Right, because I believe we've had Stratford and two others apply to open in Milpitas, in the city of Milpitas over the last five years. They've been approved by the city council.
Yes, and wherever the other Stratford school, I wasn't aware of the other two.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Obviously, things changed. The pandemic came out of nowhere. We weren't talking about the pandemic three years ago, so things could change again. But the dynamics of this district, the desirability of this district, that you're maintaining enrollment when nobody else did during the pandemic. You will probably have some losses to private schools, but I don't think it'd be at all like it would be in most districts. The bottom row, you'll see three hundred and fifteen kids projected at the elementary level over the next five years from new housing. That is heavily concentrated in the Madison attendance area, as you'll see later. And I want to again point out in the kindergarten numbers, you're up around eight hundred in the fall of twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. I'm projecting around seven hundred and less in the next five years. So that's based on various trends going on. Student population maturing out in some neighborhoods, creating aging families in those neighborhoods, plus the birth data. So if it wasn't for the growth in TK, I'd be projecting more significant decline at the elementary level.
Do you, as a part of your work, Brandon, tell me a little bit about when does PK kick in?
PK and TK are the same, they're interchangeable. And currently, Executive Director dropping us, TK goes through, is it March? February? Okay.
It's five months this year, seven months next year, nine months the following year, and a full year starting in twenty twenty-five. A district can opt to go faster than that. I know some districts are already on the full year, four-year-olds being eligible for TK. So in a minimum, you have to go two more months next year through March one, April, and excuse me, and then June one, and then the full year. But you can go faster than that. Mount Pleasant has already gone to June one for next year, for example. So it's up to districts, but if you have, in a minute, we have to add two months next year.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
I just want to follow up with Mr. Norwood's question. I am, I am interested in understanding, what is the ratio that you're applying for our private schools to our public schools? I'm trying to understand, how do we, how do you know at some point that that ratio is changing?
When I, despite what Chris just said, when the Stratford schools opened.
Yes.
I did not see a notable hit that year to your schools. If there, whatever extent you lost kids to those schools, other kids came, apparently came in. Because there was no apparent sudden drop from the trends in the previous years to the trend in that year when the Stratford school originally opened by the Great Mall. So I assumed incorrectly or incorrectly that based on that finding from the original Stratford schools not causing a notable downward shift in your trends of your kids, whatever kids went off to that school must have been offset somehow otherwise. And when they first opened, and I did talk to someone, and I don't remember now who that was, they said that the majority came from Milpitas, but a significant share came from outside the community. Now, maybe that's changed since they first opened. I don't know, but in the first year that that Stratford school opened, I did not see a measurable negative downturn in your trends whatsoever.
Okay, and and you are aware that there is a new campus opened at off of a basically Milpitas Boulevard?
Yes.
Where the old Osh was, I guess.
And that's where I, working with Cheryl a year ago, we thought that a good place to put TK for this year was Matos and Zanker, because we didn't want to have a lack of a TK program when that school did have a TK program in your schools, because that could have caused a bigger hit on your enrollment. And so as you expand TK, you're actually helping a little bit in avoiding that loss to that new school.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
I will just add that while it's good that we're not losing additional students to Stratford. I do know from speaking to Stratford official that he says on average about fifty percent of their population is Milpitas residents. So while we might not be losing kids to them, it is an opportunity for us to get kids to return to us, or to come back to us. And if there's, he said, about six hundred and fifty kids at Stratford at the Great Mall area, so that's about three hundred and twenty-five. Then you have the preschool that you, the primary grades that you referenced, trustee junk of about a hundred and fifty, so that's about another seventy-five kids. That puts us to about four hundred. And then there's a Stratford intermediate school off of Corning Avenue. And that looks like it's around two to around two hundred kids to three hundred kids total, so that would be about a hundred and fifty. So I estimate that we probably have about five hundred and fifty Milpitas residents attending Stratford that we could attract back to our schools.
And then I'll also ask Mr. Wendy to chime in, five hundred and fifty kids that should be potentially attending Milpitas Unified School District schools that are not, what's the, what's the net gain in terms of ADA on that?
Well, if our attendance rate, say, is ninety-seven percent, so I would guess, so that's probably four hundred seventy ADA. So that's about maybe four point seven million dollars additional income to us. But Tom, actually, I do have a question, you know, I know Milpitas is very fortunate that our enrollment decline is not as significant compared to other school districts in our county. And so I did analysis, pre-COVID, we had an enrollment projection. And that enrollment was a lot higher than the after COVID. So I'm curious, when you do your analysis, you know, because you have the data, what are the the factors to cause for Milpitas decline?
Well, that's not to say COVID didn't give you a hit. COVID did give you a hit. It just wasn't on the scale.
Compared to others.
Of the districts, right. Clearly, I mean, from October twenty twenty to October twenty-one, you went down by essentially two hundred kids at the elementary level alone.
Yes.
And that clearly is a COVID factor. And those, there were families that left the area, probably aren't coming back. And that was just something we, I wasn't foreseeing at all pre-COVID. So that's just the reality of the pandemic. Most districts, and there's a slide on this coming up, lost far fewer kids this year than they did in the previous two years, including your district. So it's showing that the loss is because of COVID or bottoming out, and in a few cases, they're actually turning back up. So I think the, the, the additional impact of COVID will only be one thing, and that is what it did to the birth rates and the kids that were born before the pandemic from families that left before they reached kindergarten. So I think the, the, the ratio of burst to kindergarteners five years later has come down and is going to stay lower because of the COVID impact. In terms of the grade to grade losses, I think that's over, and that shows in the fact that you had so little enrollment change from last year to this year. But in terms of what's happening in kindergarten, it's a little bit scary, and that's I'm projecting a further decline from this year's already exceptionally low number.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Hey, I want to go back to talking about those rose colored numbers up there. Obviously, for next year, they're not hitting the middle school, but after next year, they are hitting the middle school. So as we go to the next slide, please, Scott. You'll see that, back one. Yeah, thank you. You'll see that this is the secondary enrollments, and again, in rows, I got colored the larger classes. And you'll see that throughout the last half decade, there's been a one or two classes at the secondary level that are really exceptionally large classes spread out. What happens is those classes are already up around eight hundred and seventy, eight hundred and fifty, when they had twelfth grade. I don't think you'll hit that again, but nonetheless, at the middle school level, you already have two very small classes currently in seventh and eighth. So as the classes roll up from the elementary, I'm not projecting much of a big difference. For next year, I'm projecting a loss of fifty students, because there won't be a bigger class coming in. But after next year, down there, and you'll see the October twenty twenty-four number, I have seven hundred and seventy in seventh grade. It's bouncing back up because those rose colored classes at the elementary level are coming in. That's why after next year, your middle school numbers bounce back up and become a net positive by October twenty twenty-five and stay there. The high school level, on the other hand, currently has very large classes in eleventh and twelfth grade, especially in eleventh grade. And after next year, you lose that large class now in eleventh grade, and you'll gain the really small classes, especially current small class now in seventh grade and in eighth grade coming up. So the high school is where your big change is happening. This is simply where your kids are today by grade. Three years out, I have you being down by a hundred and nineteen kids at the high school level. After that, it starts to come back up as those dip numbers come out and larger numbers in the elementary grades come in. You're also adding ninety-five kids in total in the secondary grades from new housing during that time. So in the short term, the big difference is going to be at high school, but even that tends to net out next to nothing in five years' time. Any questions on that?
So in combination with the the middle school grades, you know, with expansion of TK, we're going to have eight grade levels at elementary school campuses. Now, I guess my question is more directed than you intended. Have we done an analysis to see if we have the space at the elementary school levels to fully house the expanded TK grade or full TK grade? And if not, is our middle schools capable of housing an extra grade if we decide to go in that direction?
No, I don't believe that our, our middle schools could house a sixth grade. That's what you're asking. And for the TK, yes, we have room. We're expanding the TK. This coming year, we're going to have thirteen TK classes. We did speak as a whole team this morning about the ramifications of increasing further, as Tom said, out to June. The piece, though, that Assistant Sue John shared with us is that you know, we don't receive ADA or we don't receive funding for the students until they actually hit four years old. So if we were to extend the year next year, say, to June one, we would not capture any funding for those students.
Understood, next year, but hopefully in the five years.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just looking from projection standpoint.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm quite of a quick question. I take that back. Questions are never quick. Do you, how do you take into account the, you stated that things have been relatively stable in our community? How do you take into account the inflation rate as well as the the, the market changes in terms of employment in recent, with the regional, the layoffs that are happening in the tech sector, which is a big part of the economy in this region?
Well, not just the layoffs, but if the layoffs for H one B people, they have sixty days to find a new job or they have to leave the country. And in some of my clients in Sebato County in particular, they're already seeing the impact of that. All I can say is that none of your trend data to date shows that impact to anywhere near the degree I'm seeing it elsewhere. So it's clear that people are determined to get into this district and stay in this district if they can. That doesn't mean everybody can, especially if you're an H B one B worker, you're going to have to leave the country if you can't get a job. But in, in anything I'm seeing in your data, I'm seeing people trying to stay in this district if they can in a way that I'm not seeing, you know, I don't mean to be saying naves, they're good districts too, but they're not staying in various, they're not staying in Oak Grove, they're not staying in Mount Pleasant. They're not staying in Campbell, they're not staying in Santa Clara, they're not staying in Sunnyville, they're not staying in Cupertino, they're staying here. So a, a lot of people are determined to stay here for their kids. And if they can find any way, shape or form to do that, they will. That's not to say you didn't lose some kids from twenty nineteen, from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one in the pandemic. It's not to say we don't have small birth numbers that show some young families have not remained here, because the youngest families are the ones that are most financially hit by a job loss in the short term. But, but relatively speaking, I know I'm seeing that as big a hit in this district as elsewhere. Could it change? I mean, if we have another twenty thousand dollar jobs lost in the next six months, sure, it could change these projections.
Well, just to add to your comments, one of the things that the Milpitas Unified School District did during the pandemic, and everyone that worked for the district will tell you, is that they work extremely hard. I mean, we kept schools open, we did everything that we could while other school districts were not open during that time. And folks fought to get to this district and the ones that were here stayed. So the fact that you're, 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 you're in a way telling the staff and everyone in the district that the work that we did during the pandemic was a tremendous benefit for us to be able to maintain our, our attendance rates, our enrollments rates the way that they are.
Right.
So thank you for that.
I have a follow-up question on, in regards to the factors and also again, leveraging what President Norwood asked in terms of factors such as inflation and economic downturns. It seems to me that if, if there is a downturn, would you agree that, you know, families who might have been able to afford Stratford, for example, would actually come to Milpitas Unified if they had experienced a job loss?
It could almost be a wash. It could be people that are coming, that are now in this district that are very financially marginal.
Yep.
Have to leave. At the same time, people at Stratford manage to stay here but can't afford Stratford anymore will come to your district. So I mean, it's, you know, I can't tell exactly on balance what the net deficit would be, but I think there would be a lot of an offset there from that factor.
Okay, thank you.
I was about to say, that previous slide I showed you of the chart, back when the dot com bust happened.
Right.
Your enrollment went way down. So it does happen. And in the late eighties, when the peace dividend happened and they started not stop building a bunch of warplanes and stuff in Southern California, I had districts that lost five thousand kids in one year. So an economic downturn can be a serious hit. I'm just not seeing an economic downturn of that scale yet in the data.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. Okay. All my analyses are based on where your kids live, not the schools they happen to attend. It's only when I'm done with my forecast that I try and tie it back to where they may attend schools. So what I refer to resident students, I'm talking about your kids, not private school kids, but your kids based on where they live. And in some attendance areas, there's a significant difference. For example, Weller has four hundred and forty-five K six kids as of October twenty twenty-two in his attendance area. And we have three hundred ninety-seven in attendance. So it was a net outflow of forty-eight kids from that school to the other schools in this district. Matos has a net outflow of seventy-seven. Part of that is because when you first opened Matos, some of the kids stayed in there, if they're already at Zanker, they chose to stay at Zanker, et cetera. So that seventy-seven number is going to come down pretty quickly in the future. As the last of the kids that were grandfathered into the schools they previously had, especially Zanker, go away. So that's anchor positive twenty-four will probably disappear as well. Does that make sense to everybody? But nonetheless, when I talk about what happened to the resident student changes, you'll see out on the right in the column, the numbers in orange are losses of at least thirty students over the next three years. And Palmway, I'm projecting to be down by forty-eight, Curtner, I'm projecting to be down by forty-eight, Spangler down by forty, Rose down by fifty-eight, and Senate by fifty-two. Now, that doesn't include TK. Growth in TK will offset some of those reductions, but not all the reductions of that scope. On the other hand, Matos is gaining a hundred and seventy-five students in that time, not kind of go TK on top of that. So when I look at the column of early October twenty twenty-five in the right half of the table, you'll see I've got models up to seven seventy, just in case six ninety counting TK in twenty twenty-five. Weller is still down around four hundred and twenty-five, so even though it didn't have much of a loss, it's a very small number. And Burnett, even though it doesn't have much of a loss, is down around four fifteen. The other schools are all in the five hundred, six hundred range, but Matos is way out of scale with the rest because of the all the new housing going on there. Basically, not entirely, but basically, that's when most of the housing is done in the modest attendance area. There's still a few other options left, a couple more possibilities in single court, et cetera, parade, drive-in court. But a lot of the stuff that's being built, models will be finished within three years. So I don't think. So I don't think Matos is going to continue soaring past twenty twenty-five, but it will continue growing past twenty twenty-five. It's hard to make a a number by an attendance area more than three years out. But on my estimate is it's going to end up peaking in the low eight hundreds, not counting TK. And what happens when a lot of housing is built all at once in a district, and I've seen this over and over again, Castro Valley, I saw it in Spades. When they build all the housing at once, there's all these young families move in, they all have a bunch more kids, the enrollment in the school there explodes, they have a huge capacity problem. But what happens ten years out is unless there's been a lot of turnover, and I think people want to stay in this town, those people that have those kids now have matured past childbearing age. So Matos, I think ten years out, is going to start having a declining number. It's not going to just keep going up and up and up. Does that make sense to everybody? A lot of the families moved in there, moved in there and had kids, already had kids, had more kids, but they're now in their forties, they're not having kids. So another three or four years out, the the birth rate data, even in the Matos attendance area, will probably start coming down. And when I get out to, say, twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, I expect the models numbers are going to start coming back down, but they easily could be in the eight hundreds at the peak. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. Uh next slide, please. I'll go into this just very briefly because it's not, you know, it's important the elementary level. The Russell areas are projected to lose um some kids in the next three years, and the Rancho area, mainly because of the Matos attendance area, expected to gain some kids. But when we get to twenty twenty-five, I've got Russell with seven hundred and thirty-five resident kids and Rancho with seven hundred and sixty-one resident kids. So despite them going in opposite directions, they end up with pretty well-balanced numbers. Does everybody see where I'm looking at with that? So these numbers don't bother me, even though they're going in opposite directions. Next slide, please. Okay, this is a hard table to read. I'm just going to focus on the rightmost column. That's the change that happened in the last year. And for all but really all but one of these districts, um the terrible rate of change that occurred from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one was halved or less than halved this year. Uh Berias is the outlier. They actually had a greater line decline this year than the average of the two previous years. But everybody else, Cupertino, for example, went down by an average annual rate of eight percent in the two years before last year. The one went down by essentially four percent this year. Caprio, Hatton Bay went down by nearly eight percent, went down by three point three percent this year. Your district went down by an average of only one point five percent from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one, which is a misnumber because it's actually gained in twenty twenty. But nonetheless, you only went down by another point three percent this year. The point of this table is to show that almost everybody other than Berias who are having a worse loss this year and sorry, Carlos having an unusual spurt. Um everybody else had much less of a decline this year than the previous two years on average, which shows that COVID's impacts are fading. That's the sole purpose of this table, to say that the big hit that came and the worst of the pandemic's impacts, clearly, no matter what just to look at, with two exceptions, um has it or is ending. Questions on this slide for the next one? Okay, next slide, please.
Um just for future reference time on that previous slide.
Sure. Go back, please.
It um, you know, I I I understand that you're showing us, you know, the uh the net loss from that game twenty-one to twenty-two. Um and one of the things that just popped into my head is the fact that um looking at the total size of each of these different school districts. Because that, based on the size of each of these school districts, that number, what that actual number is in terms of what their um funding looks like will will vary greatly. Um is there anywhere in your presentation move uh that discusses the, when we do this comparative analysis, the size of the school districts? Or are we just looking at the percentages?
Well, the 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 hard numbers on the left side of the table. For example, Cupertino in fall twenty eighteen had seventeen thousand three hundred, uh four years later, it had thirteen thousand four hundred. Almost a four thousand student loss. Obviously, that's a huge, huge ADA hit. Um so um the, yes, what you're saying is absolutely correct, but the the main purpose of this table is simply to point out across the board that the pandemic's impacts eased this year with one exception, Berias. And there's always an outlier when I deal with this many districts. Berias is the outlier here.
Thank you.
Sure. Next slide, please, Scott. Okay, this summarizes the second uh table of four B. I have four A later if you want to get into it, but I thought it was too much to get into during this board meeting. So this just summarizes what happened in the existing housing as of six years. No housing built since twenty sixteen other than individual single homes like ADA units. But aside from that, no developments that were built since twenty sixteen are included in the top data. Only the lower data has the developments built since twenty sixteen. And so what's changed from the housing that existed in twenty sixteen over the last um six years is you lost almost six hundred kids. Did you see what I'm saying there? And of that, three hundred were half, actually, one and a half was in K two alone. What that tells me is uh partly pandemic factor of kids not being here for kindergarten, but more so it tells you the families, the existing housing are getting old. They're maturing past childbearing. Now, again, goes back to that bubble I showed you in red colors on the previous slide, how we got large grades moving up and less numbers coming in in kindergarten. This supports that. That's why that number fell much more significantly in K three than it did in TK twelve. New housing provided uh a little over two hundred kids during that time, so it offset about a third of the uh loss in existing housing. Again, that factors in the COVID issue, et cetera. And in K two, you gained eighty kids compared to losing three hundred. So the new housing, as significant as it is, and obviously a huge factor for Matos, new housing is not offsetting entirely the losses going on in existing housing. And I want to point out that some of this decline predates COVID. So um you know, you you the the peak TK twelve was reached in twenty seventeen, you'd already come down a couple hundred kids by twenty nineteen. So this wasn't entirely a COVID factor. There were other aspects going on in terms of the aging of the student population. Next slide, please, Scott. So even though Matos is getting hit by a lot of new housing, the district as a whole, the new housing is not offsetting the decline in existing housing. This is a very complex table, so I'll go through it slowly. The orange colored column is births um quote by year, but it's actually a pro-rata to correlate to kindergarten eligibility five years later. And you'll notice back in twenty-ten, there were nine hundred births. In twenty-twelve, there are nine hundred births. Um by the time I got to twenty fifteen, there were almost a thousand births, and twenty sixteen, there were a thousand births. The next, for this year and next year, they're both in the high nine hundreds. By the time I get down to twenty twenty-one, they're down to nine oh five. Now, that's partly people not having kids during the pandemic. But twenty twenty itself is not pandemic-related. Any kid born in twenty twenty was conceived before the pandemic started. And the birth numbers were already coming down in twenty twenty. So again, we have an an indication of aging families on average and slightly numbers of lower birth numbers that then got accelerated by the pandemic. And with those lower birth numbers, um also comes the indication that families that had kids in the previous years moved out of the district. That's why in the rightmost column, you'll see the correlative percentage, which had been up around eighty percent almost consistently in all the years, in the last two years, suddenly fell to seventy percent and sixty-eight percent. That means that that shows partly Stratford factors into that, but I think even more so shows families who lost because of the pandemic. So when I have a declining birth number and a lower cordial ratio of the births showing up five years later, it's a negative impact on the kindergarten forecast. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay, next slide, please. Where is this happening? Okay, when I look at the kindergarten enrollment by various sections of the district. The combined Weller and Palmway areas had a five percent decline between the average from twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen to the average over the last three years. Spangler and Curtner had an eighty-four percent or sixteen percent decline. Burnett and Rose had an eighty-eight percent or a twelve percent decline. Senate Senate had a seventeen percent decline and Zanker actually had a gain. But for all the district other than Matos, there's the number of kindergarters you had from twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen and the versus the last few years, it's only ninety percent. Twenty percent reduction. Matos by context, because of the low numbers in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, grew by a hundred fifty-two percent. So when we say where are these births happening, that's where they're happening. Otherwise, that, the rest of the district wouldn't have lost ten percent if the births were staying just as high in the rest of the district.
Say that one more time?
If the births had been staying flat in the rest of the district, we would not have had a drop but to ninety percent. In fact, that ninety percent includes a gain in Zanker. It was actually lower than ninety percent for the rest of the district other than Zanker models. So it tells me that most of the the birth, see, you are getting, at least the increase that happened up until the last, the last two years, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, were concentrated in the modest attendance area. You'll notice that this year you have a hundred and five kindergartners in the modest attendance area, um which is down slightly from last year's total, but it's still up from what you had in twenty nineteen. So you actually have more kindergartners this year than before the pandemic. Normally so.
In the Matos area?
In the Matos area, yes. Next slide, please, Scott. Okay, students come from new housing. I will just quickly go through this. Um I sampled uh townhouses and plexes built in the last six years in this district. I sampled apartments and condos built in the last six years in this district. I sampled the small numbers of developments of single-family detached homes, which doesn't deal with individual single home replacements. And I, the only development in this district that's below market rate is now thirteen years old, well, twelve and a half years old. So it's really not a good sample, but I still put it up there in lavender to show you what that development, Aspen Family Housing is generating. Um it's entirely multiple bedroom units um with a high concentration of three and four bedroom units. So it's not comparable to what's being built in single court now and will be built in single court in the next few years. And that's why I've included a sample from a Sunnyvale and Foster Fremont Union High School District, because that's more comparable to what's being built in single court. What you're getting on average out of townhouses and plexes is essentially one student in every five units. That's higher than the most districts. What you're getting out of apartments and condos on average is one student out of every seventeen units. I'm sure that surprised a lot of people, but the reason why is the types of apartments and condos they're building now are not family-oriented.
Right.
They're building high-density, small one-bedroom and small two-bedroom uh units targeted towards singles and childless couples. They have lap pools and weight rooms and no place for kids to play, or very few places for kids to play. So they're not family-oriented, not like the apartments that were built thirty years ago that were mainly three and four bedroom with child play areas and kids swimming pools and things like that. So um I have some districts like Santa Clara where I'm getting less than one student every fifty units. So for you to get one unit student every seventeen is actually better than most. Um but it's still an amazingly low number. That's important because a lot of what's going in right now in the modest attendance area is high-density apartments. So it's not going to be the big hit that the townhouses were in the past. Um you're averaging essentially one student every three units out of detached homes. There's very few detachables being projected. And using the Sunnyvale and Fremont Union High School District uh developments of uh below market rate housing, you're averaging one student essentially a little over one every two units. And that's what I expect to get out of most of single court. One of the single court developments, however, has some units designated for military veterans, uh and that won't have many kids. Next slide, please, Scott.
Now, one of the things I hear, I think I hear you're saying, uh just in a. Parts of Milpitas are getting, are more mature and are getting older, and then the Matos area is younger. Um and that's what's producing the numbers. Is that?
That's correct. And some, some areas, particularly Zanker, show signs that turnovers bought in the young families. That's the one other attendance area that's actually gained in kindergarten from the twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen average, the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two average.
But isn't that based on the fact that when we had the people coming into the Matos area, because the the campus wasn't built out yet, the kids started to go to Zanker and then they didn't go back? You mentioned that earlier.
This is where the kids live. This is not the schools they attended. This is the number of district enrolled kids living in the Zanker attendance area, the number of district enrolled kids living in the Matos attendance area, today's attendance area, I should say. Um regards to the schools they attended five, six, seven years ago. So even part of the current Matos attendance area didn't, wasn't even assigned to Matos six years ago. But I'm saying the number of kindergartners in the current Matos attendance area grew by that much. Number of kids in the current Zanker attendance area grew a little. Um so at least in the Zanker area, turnover is clearly bringing families in. It's important to note that the two attendance areas you're showing the best trends in are the two attendance areas that are closest to the Stratford schools. So again, at least for Zanker and uh Matos, whatever you lost to the Stratford schools, you more than made up and more families moving in. And they're the closest schools to those um Stratford schools.
So we're coming, so there's competition going on over there and we're holding our ground.
Yes, correct. So if you just look at the pink rose in this table, you'll see that I've got at the very bottom of my corner, twenty-one hundred units projected over the next five years. Of which, two-thirds almost are in the Matos attendance area alone. But most of those, over a thousand of those, are the apartments and condos that are having a very low student yield. Whereas again, what was built originally in Matos was mainly townhouses. What is mainly being built in Matos now, other than single court, is apartments and condos. So I'm not expecting quite as, even though that number is huge, a thousand units of apartments and condos, is it translating into about sixty kids TK twelve or half that many at the elementary level? So it's not a big hit. You're getting more of an influence out of the more market rate housing, that's BMR, that's being built on single court, that you will have all those apartments and condos. Does that make sense to everybody? You know, so the second largest number is Zanker. That's the stuff on the east side of Main Street. There are several developments going in on the east side of Main Street with several hundred units, but again, they're mainly apartments and condos. Weller has two hundred and fifty. That's the big development that's being proposed now on California Circle. Um I think it's thirteen fifty-five or thirteen thirty-five California Circle, uh and that's why Weller's got a significant number. The rest of the district has next to nothing. Next slide, please. Questions? Further questions? Yes.
Um I've been fortunate enough to see this eight previous times, you know, when I first got to the board. So uh I'm always, let me back up. Uh questions from the board?
Um I I just have one suggestion. Um I love the data. Um I I would like as a suggestion to see uh for future uh the trends for uh your ratio of, you know. Uh students going to type schools versus MSD.
Uh because of the new school, and I wasn't aware there were two other new schools, I was unaware of the new Stratford school, I wanted to beyond that.
Right.
Which the city didn't tell me about for some unknown reason.
Well, so for your information, at least, I was told that actually uh Stratford bought uh Rainbow Bridge, uh which allowed them to increase their campuses. So there does seem to be a growth in Stratford.
Um is, if if the ratio is changing, then it's an important thing to identify.
Right.
If the ratio is staying the same, then it's not an important thing to identify. Um again, although Chris visited the Stratford and felt different, uh and Cheryl has heard the same thing as I, that they're getting about fifty percent of their kids from outside uh Milpitas. Um there are adjacent districts that aren't considered as um. Desirable, for lack of a better term, as Milpitas is, and people are more interested in getting to those Stratford schools, I think, from those districts in some ways, even though they're coming from outside your community. Um but again, if even half the kids in Milpitas are going to Stratford schools, obviously, it's a hit on your ADA.
Yep. That's all. I'm good.
Any other comments from the board? Seeing none. Um as always, thank you um uh for your time and your energy. You've always put a lot, a tremendous amount of effort into this work. I know you care passionately about our community and you want to call it, like, you see it. Um you've been able to do that for a number of years and it's been helpful in terms of the decision-making uh that we do in the district in terms of our budget and and different things like that. So this is a very important uh presentation for us and we definitely appreciate your efforts.
Thank you, Chris.
Woo. A lot. Um uh item sixteen A, uh A two uh quarterly report, William settlement, compliance.
Thank you, President Norwood. Each quarter, we have to report to the board if we've had any complaints for William to the superintendent's office, and we have not for this quarter.
Thank you. Item sixteen B, learning and development, sixteen B, uh BI or B one, mental health services update.
Yes, good evening. As our team is coming to the podium, um this evening, uh our mental health team or some of our me- uh mental health team members will be presenting an update to the board. On the sports and services that we provide throughout the district, as well as some of the trends we're seeing and linkages that they're able to do for um to other community agencies. This evening, we have in front of you um Hayden Weinberg, uh we also have Jasmine Bajwa and Irene Rak- Rakino. Rakino, I I practiced it in my brain, I promise you. And then um Lisa Torres, who's their mental health supervisor, who will present this. And then Lisa Torres, who's their mental health supervisor, who will present this evening. So I'll let you guys take it from here.
Yeah, hi, I'm Lisa Torres. I'm the mental health supervisor for our mental health clinicians here in Milpitas Unified School District. And I wanted to let everyone just introduce themselves, what their designation is as a mental health counselor and what site they're at. And then we'll go ahead and go through some of the data that we've been collecting in the short time we've been going this year.
Hi, I'm Hayden Weinberg. I'm a trainee from Santa Clara University currently at Rancho Middle School.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jasmine Bajwa. I'm a trainee also from Santa Clara University. My emphasis is in health and my passion is working with first generation Asian American youth. I'm Maple Matos, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Irene Rakino and I'm an associate marriage family therapy. I am in the Calveras High School.
Okay, so I came in as the mental health supervisor in about mid-September. And so one of the things that we worked on was really solidifying what we wanted the mental health counseling program to look like. So that we could serve the most students possible. One of the big things we focused on was getting group therapies going. As you may or may not know, group therapy is actually a very evidence-based, research-backed. It is one of the best first approaches for helping mild to moderate mental health challenges. It also gives us an opportunity to impact more students at once. So with that, we have taken that model for students who have more severe challenges. We will do a round of individual therapy. This includes a assessment that we do to see what the needs are of the student, the family. And then we make a collaborative treatment plan with the family and the student. The treatment plan identifies a short-term, specific, school-based goal. And with that, we work closely with the teachers and we look, work closely with the parents to help the students achieve that goal. And up to about twelve sessions, sometimes it's a little bit more, sometimes it's a little bit less, but we definitely want to celebrate their successes. As we know, kids don't magically get cured of everything, so sometimes they bounce back for something different. But we're really excited to share about some of the successes we've had with you. I'm really proud of our mental health counseling team. We are a therapist, primarily a therapist, student therapist program, which carries a lot of benefits. We have therapists coming in with the latest knowledge and they're eager, they're excited. They've been a blast to supervise and work with. They love what they do and I, I can't wait for you to hear more from them.
And just let me know when to advance the slides.
So one of MUSD's mental health programs' main goals this year is to encourage and work through a culture and attitude of we. This means including other supportive adults like teachers, parents and site administrators in the child's treatment plan. And we know through decades of research that the progress a child makes in therapy lasts much longer when both parents and teachers are involved in supporting the child. So what does this look like? It's one thing if a child does a great job practicing their emotion regulation skills in therapy. But it's another thing if they're able to implement those same skills outside of the therapy room, on the playground, at home or in their classroom. So this is when parents and teachers come into the picture. By collaborating with parents and teachers, we mental health counselors are able to coach them. And evidence-based interventions, the child has responded well to in sessions. So that way, when we counselors aren't around, the child is well-equipped, has well-equipped and supportive adults around to help them. Another fabulous approach MUSD's mental health program takes is partnering with community organizations. If we have a student whose mental health needs may be greater than school-based counseling. For example, a child who may have violently lost a parent or loved one. We understand that meeting once a week for half an hour to fifty minutes may not be enough to best support the student. So in cases like this, we maintain transparency with parents, guardians, teachers and site administrators. And we help refer the student to community-based organizations such as the Center for Living What's Dying, Pacific Clinics or other resources that can offer the student much more wraparound support.
So one thing that we, as mental health council, support students is that we are passionate in identifying their strengths. For example, because I work within the high school students, this could lead to identifying their future goals such as their higher education and career goals. And because of the collaboration that Jasmine had mentioned, it's really important to engage students and family within the school staff site and as well as other communities. Mainly because in my site, there's a lot of students that are struggling to attend school or even having to motivate to come to school. Important key is also self-advocacy within the, the school staff and parents. We provide support to the students who are in need of communicating their needs to other important people. And also, we do collaborate in classrooms, presentations, in learning lessons such as social, emotional, and that is within their appropriate age as well.
So what we have here is we have some of our elementary school site data. When students and their families, when the student completes the treatment, especially individual therapy, we send out a satisfaction survey and we invite them to complete that satisfaction survey and give us feedback. Some of the questions that we ask the parents are in regard to are they satisfied with the support that the mental health counselor provided? Do they believe the interventions were effective? And do they believe the concerns that brought the student to counseling have improved? As you can see, we have a pretty high rating up there. We did a Likert scale from one to five with five being strongly agreed. For the students, we asked them directly if they believe that mental health counseling led to positive changes. If they would recommend working with the mental health counselor to others, like their peers. And also just their overall experience of therapy. And as you can see, we're we've got some great scores there that are showing that our mental health counselors are connecting with not just the students, but the families as well. And I'm going to let Jasmine share a little bit about what she's seen on the elementary school campus.
So a quick question for you. How many students were surveyed at the elementary school sites to produce this data?
I have, you know, I don't have the exact number. I don't want to guess. I can get it back to you. But I would say if I had to guess, around thirty or forty.
Per site? Or total?
At total, total.
So a lot of our, for our elementary school sites we've had, how many of you are at elementary school sites?
Just Jasmine.
Okay, and at her site, thirty students surveyed for this data, correct?
At all of the elementary school sites. So we may have set out surveys that weren't completed as well, right? So we depend on them to complete the surveys also. The mental health services started in about early October. Like I mentioned, I came on later in the school year. And so the services started later. So for those who were on the individual therapy track, right? The twelve weeks pretty much just ended in February. So we were looking for the rest of the data to come through for the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Just a follow-up question on that. So is this data based on the group session, the group sessions? Or the individuals?
The feedback surveys, it's a mix. So a lot of times, a student may start an individual therapy, maybe have some more severe difficulties and maybe we're linking them to ongoing outside support. But we may decide that there also could benefit from one of the school-based groups we're doing. And so a kid who's completing the survey, they may have had individual and group. I have some other specific data that if you click on the reference link, you can see more specifics about what services exactly they got. But a lot of times it is a combination.
Will there be a slide that shows the teacher and the principal survey as well? I mean, because you are at their school sites and you recommend, you're showing the parent, the caregiver, but obviously they're at school, so there are two other people that have. I would expect to have input.
Yeah, we have had some staff fill out the survey and it's been a small number. But typically at the end of the school year is when we would give the site administrators and the teachers a chance to fill out a feedback survey. I do, we do a beginning of the year site meeting where we review, where I meet with the site administrators and the mental health counselors and talk about what's working, what's not working. We meet again mid-school year and then we'll also have another one at the end of the school year.
Okay.
So I would like to start with the trends we're seeing at the elementary school level. In my particular experience at my school. So Maple Matos, we have TK through sixth grade. And we saw out of all the referrals, referrals were made by teachers and parents alike. TK through third grade, the biggest issues we saw were peer conflict, social skills and emotion regulation. And you know, we're seeing numbers for these specific referral reasons. If you just look at the studies for referral reasons in general across elementary schools, pre-pandemic versus now. We're noticing in the younger kids after the pandemic, there is, there are many more emotion regulation problems. That begs the question, why? And one of the factors is online school. For the two, two and a half year students at online school, or even one year, they lost out on valuable time where you learn how to disagree and argue with other kids your age. You learn how to handle it if someone snatches away your Chromebook, the peer accidentally bumps into you. So at the beginning of the year, TK through third grade, we were noticing a lot of meltdowns that were age inappropriate. For example, losing a game at recess would trigger a huge meltdown of screaming and crying that would sometimes lead into the classroom environment. And it would disrupt the classroom. The student who was experiencing the emotional dyspergulation wasn't able to cope with it. And it would also distract other students. For our older students, that would be fourth through sixth grade. There are some grief issues, some trauma, some loss, some of that associated with the pandemic, some not. As for intervention, so because we're school-based counseling, we have a twelve-session model. Our counseling is meant to be short-term. We focus a lot on DBT interventions, so dialectical behavioral therapy, which is skills-based. So we teach students how to handle emotional distress, how to identify supportive adults who can help you out. Communication with peers, providing students sentence structures where you can communicate the event, how it makes you feel and what your, what your needs are, what the support you need. My favorite part about working at Matos has been how willing the teachers are to just nourish and advocate and protect their students. For example, we had one third grader who was experiencing extreme withdrawal after coming in from online school. To the point where for most of the school day, he would have his head down during recess, he would wander around or sit under the slide. As I started to work with the teacher to figure out how to integrate him better into the classroom, she knew from his drawings that he loves nature, so she started bringing in her house plants and she gave him the job of class gardener. And just little things like that helped boost his self-esteem, helped get him more involved. And now he speaks in class and he's able to finish his eye-ready assessments with less meltdowns. He's able to ask for help, he's able to ask how to take a break. Similarly, we had a second grader who, the way the teacher described it, when he was upset, he would turn into a puddle. He would just lay on the ground and cry for extended periods of time and that would disrupt the second grade class environment. She knew from conversations with him that he was obsessed with astronauts and rocket ships. So she invited me to come into her class. We identified a safe space where she put on a small, she put out a small carpet. She got a pillow, a pillowcase with like a rocket ship on it and that was his sit-up space. So now when he had a meltdown and when other students have a meltdown because they're upset, they're able to tell the teacher, I need a safe place to go. And they go to the rocket ship spot. So small things like that, connecting with the students, meeting them where they're at. And the teachers at Matos have done a wonderful job. Thank you.
This is some of the data for the middle school sites. We're at Rancho and Thomas Russell. And I'm going to let Hayden talk a little bit about his experience at Russell. I'm sorry, Rancho.
Oh, good. I just want to say I absolutely adore this population. This is one of my favorite populations to work with. Middle school is really where the whole idea of individual identity becomes, begins to blossom and flourish for these kids. And it really creates a whole new world for them. And in that new world comes a lot of scary changes, a lot of scary adjustments which can lead to an increase in anxiety and depression. And most importantly, a lot of self-esteem issues, especially involving peer conflicts. Because middle school is really the age where you're trying to figure out who you are, who your friends are and who your best, best friends are that you spell all the T to. And so it is, it's a great population to work with. And the unfortunate thing is sometimes when these students do get caught up in these self-esteem issues and peer conflicts, it can lead to some safety concerns anywhere from passive suicidal ideation to even acting on some self-harm. And so one of the ways we deal with that is through both group intervention and individual therapy. I myself have done two groups already this year focused solely around social interactions and building up interpersonal skills. I've done a much more broader DBT group focused on mindfulness as well as I'll be starting up a high school readiness group for some of the eighth graders. And I think some of the best experiences to see is when you have some of these students that come in, where you're afraid to do these groups. Not so sure how they feel being around other students to be at the end of a four-week session and have them come up to you and be, couldn't you please let me know when you were doing another group? I'd love to join. And so it, it's really a benefit to work with these kids. It's wonderful. It helps to bring in the parents too and really build this more social connection for everybody. Thank you.
Next slide please. Okay, I'm going to let Irene go ahead and speak a little bit about high school.
Yes, so I had previously had experience of working in Milpitas High School and now as well in Calaveras High School. And a lot of the themes that I have seen in terms of issues within students are anxiety, depression, bullying, substance use. And also with any like trauma situations or grieving process as well. And one thing, because of the twelve, the twelve sessions or short term, we provide a lot more on solution-focused and more
Type of focus?
Solution-focused.
Okay.
And motivational interviewing, which means we try to identify when is the students ready to make the change. And, and that's when it's really helpful for us to understand where they are in terms of their stages. I work with a lot of diverse population community and one thing is it's to be, remain culturally humble. For example, in Calhills, I work within a lot of students that are underserved population. And one of the successful students that I've had was, he was part of a gang member. And within working with his panic attacks and his severe anxiety, he was able to join SVCTE and graduated early, became the president of the school. And also now wanting to become a firefighter. So these has been one of the greatest experience that I have working with the students. And, and within the high school sites, we provide services both tier three and tier two. Individual and group therapy. And in my site, we, I have been working with group in safety seeking for substance use as well as mindfulness, building healthy relationship because of peer conflicts. Within Milpitas High School, they are also having group therapy and mindfulness, emotional regulation. Emotional regulation, L B G T Q I A plus and also with seeking safety.
What was the last item you mentioned?
Seeking safety.
Seeking safety.
Yes.
And you said you work with a lot. Can you give me a ballpark on a lot?
So with my group therapy, there's about twenty four to twenty six students with. Four different topics of group therapy and with my seeking safety, there's about. Twelve. Each two sessions.
Thank you.
And with individual, there's about average of twenty students.
Thank you.
If I can just add, for those of you who don't know, seeking safety is an evidence based practice that addresses. Both trauma and substance use. And so it's considered a very harm reduction model. Teenagers tend to respond really positively to it because it is more solution focused and stages of change focus. So. What you've heard from them is that we're using a lot of evidence based practices. We're using a lot of collaborative practices. Um, we're trying to, you know, really put the students and the parents in the driver's seat of the treatment as much as possible. Uh, next slide, please. These are just some highlights of things parents have written. About their appreciation of the program and their appreciation of MHC support. Can you do the next slide, please? And this is a bunch of the student feedback, more qualitative. What did you find most helpful? What I love is that they're actually listing therapy terms, grounding skills. They're actually listing ignoring the bully and communicate there. You know, talking about courage, they're talking about affirmations. They're actually talking about tools in their feedback that are being covered in therapy. So. That means there's something sticking with them, which is exciting to see. Um, if you could change anything about your counseling, what would it be? We have things like I would be more comfortable with the female counselor. We have. How that I would like to know who the MHC meets with also. That's a popular one except for especially for elementary schools. They want to know who we all know. Less worksheets. That's a popular one kind of in the high schools where we're trying to really get them to connect in that cognitive brain a little bit more. Basketball courts, when you see games, I want to be clear, we're not just playing games. I know the kids think we are, but there's actual modalities. That use play therapy and expressive therapies that are evidence based. So we're not just playing Uno, we're doing a lot of work within these games. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, questions?
Questions from the board.
Sure. So when you. Talk about parent involvement in these particular sessions. I know based on the feedback, the feedback seems to give me impression and I don't know how these work. That, you know, there are more customers watching this happening and then. While there's a change that they're happy with. Can you give me a better insight as to how parents are actually involved in the therapies themselves and short and perhaps. If it's too long, maybe we, we should consider a study session at least for some of our younger board members here.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I can give you a brief. Description right now. So basically, one of my expectations of the mental health counselors is that we're reaching out to the parents by phone every two weeks. If there's any kind of safety issues like suicidal ideation, self harm, then it needs to be more than that. Um, we're checking in with the parents about if they're seeing improvement at home. If there's any additional concerns coming up. And so we're constantly involving them in the treatment. We're providing updates. We're teaching them interventions. That we're finding are working. We're letting them know that we're connecting with the school teachers and passing on those interventions as well. It could also include emails of descriptions of how to do the interventions also.
I see. Okay. And I have one last question. One of the challenges, especially in high school is the different potential expectations. Of parents to their students and different communication challenges between students and parents. Can you give me a very short example of how do you deal with that and how do you deal with that?
Yeah, I mean, we deal with it similar to how we would do with any of the other age groups. You know, we may have a phone call with the student, the therapist and the parent. We also have an option of having a video call. Um, I know sometimes parents can't take off from work and so we want to try to be as accessible as possible to the parents. And typically we will prep the parent beforehand and we'll prep the kid beforehand and kind of try to find a common ground. And then give them specific tasks that they can work on. Um, a lot of times those same communication issues the students are having with the, with the parents, they're also having at school with their teachers and peers. And so it kind of gives a more holistic approach.
Thank you very much.
As you're wrapping up, I would like to ask Mr. Forster to go to slide number five. Number five. No, it's the one that says additional data. There you go. So if you click on that link. I just wanna make the board members aware that there is additional data that we can look at later. Um, the one tab with the parent feedback, you said there were seventy responses. With the student feedback eighty one responses. And then the referral tracker is real time referral tracker. So you can see to date, we have six hundred and seventy six students.
So I'll say this is actually from about till about mid March, mid to end of March, when I had to turn in the slides. So it's even higher now. I can update it.
So we are serving a lot of students and I thank you for all of your work that you're doing and it is a work in progress. And I appreciate. That you're here sharing everything that you've been doing and I think to trustee Jung's point. At some, at a future date, perhaps at the beginning of the next school year, we can do a study session so it can dive in a little deeper.
Yeah, that'd be great. I'd be happy to.
So thank you, mental health counseling team for being here and doing the presentation. I really appreciate hearing from all three levels. Um, at the school. Uh, one of the things that people talk about is social emotional health and mental health. It seems to be. You know, a term that gets swapped back and forth, but with that, has the definition of a moderate to severe case changed? And i- if so, where does the social anxiety sit in that spectrum?
So when I'm talking about moderate to severe, I'm talking about a pretty big impact to the school functioning, right? And so moderate to severe is somebody who's not able to stay in the classroom. Who's melting down in the classroom, who is having thoughts of wanting to hurt themselves, maybe even acting on those thoughts. So that's kind of moderate to severe. When I'm talking about more mild to moderate, I'm talking about kids where maybe occasionally they have a hard time in the classroom. A couple of times a week rather than every day. I'm talking about kids more on the mild side, maybe they have social anxiety where they're not really causing any problems at school. But they're struggling to make connections with others. Um, a lot of the social anxiety we're seeing, I think. Across the board in all three levels of school. Really has to do with the developmental delays we have now because of COVID, right? Kids miss some really key years. Um, at the elementary level, the middle level, the high school level of. How you interact with other people. And so I think at the elementary school level, some of the other, the newer ish things I've seen. Is more extreme statements coming from elementary students, stuff that I would typically more see in the older grades like. You know, threats or just things that they say out of anger. Um, and then at the middles and high schools, it's kind of remained, you know, where there's, there's quite a bit of suicidal ideation and self harm.
Gotcha. No, thank you for that and defining that. Um, I think Jasmine mentioned something in, in her presentation about. Online schools being the issue, um, but yet in, in some of the fall, she, she talked about moderating socialization. So that talks more about the isolation than it is online schooling as the cause of the issue. So I, I hope the reframe of that, right? Because during the isolation, those students didn't necessarily socialize outside with others.
Yeah.
Not necessarily just the classroom environment.
Yeah, and I, thank you. I did want to make that clear that we're not talking about the schools were lacking anything, you know? The pandemic affected all the systems, right? And so when we're, when, what we're talking about specifically to you all is the school based goals, because that's what we're focused on. But we're definitely not saying that the education system is responsible per se for. You know, this was, COVID was such a large systemic issue. It impacted the home system, the neighborhood system, the community. I mean, just all levels as you all know.
No, absolutely. And I think part of your work looks at the root cause of everything, right? And so, uh, not to misidentify, but to, to point incorrectly to the, the root cause. Can, can deter as far as the progress.
Yeah, thank you for the question.
No, I appreciate that. And then Hayden, uh, you know, in the middle school level, uh, you mentioned as far as the self esteem and the capacity of those students and self identifying. So from that perspective, I appreciate the enthusiasm as far as addressing that particular grade level. Uh, and then Irene at the high school level, uh, showing those high school students their capacity, um, their future and, and the pathways. As we talked about in this district, always creating pathways for their own success, no matter where they start. So I appreciate those thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, are there any comments from the public?
Uh, we have no public comment at this time.
Um, thank you, board for your comments and, and superintendent for expanding the conversation about the additional data. And the different perspectives is very, very helpful for, um, for me personally, I'm always listening for data points and. Those types of things in the work, um, and I'm always listening for because the fact that you are on, uh, the campuses of our principals and. The teachers are engaged. I, I was, um. I would like to see, um, there in future presentations, I would like to see their feedback included as well. Because again, you're a part of their environments and if you're having that type of impact. It, it could be helpful in other areas that you may, that they may know of or you may not know of. So that's one of the things that I will be looking for. And again, I do appreciate all the things that you guys have done and you continue to do on behalf of the students of M U S D. Any question?
Just one more addition. Um, May is Mental Health Awareness Month and today we focus specifically on the supports for our students. In May, we will be bringing a presentation on the supports and mental health supports. Uh, that we offer for our staff as well. So that will be forthcoming and I wanted to, um, highlight that or pre highlight that for the, for the board.
Awesome. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Onto our action items. Item seventeen A one, business services certify the disclosure of the Milpitas Management Association Agreement Assistant Superintendent Business Services.
Yes, uh, Milpitas Management Association stands for MMA and it's not a collective bargaining unit. So it's not the subject of the A B twelve hundred disclosure. But for transparency purpose, each year after we. Did the meet and confirm with the superintendent and we still do the same disco, uh, disclosure as we did. With the MTA and also the C S C A. So on April seventh, representatives from the MMA met with our superintendent and come up with this agreement. Let me share my screen so I can walk you through. The disclosure. So this is the same document that we used as we did for MTA and C S C A and. We started with our total, um, members, sixty five F T E. And this is for the twenty two, twenty three school year. And here is the agreement. And the salary schedule on, um, ongoing nine percent. And we have a health and welfare cap, a hundred dollar increase effective January first, twenty twenty three. And the total package, just the same as MTA and the C S C A is a ten percent. So besides the nine percent salary ongoing and we have that one percent. And a portion of that will cover for the hundred dollar medical cap increase. And then the balance of that is about eighty one thousand nine hundred. And we would like to spread that, um, across the board certificate and a classified management salary schedule. And so that comes together with a total compensation equals to ten percent. And here is the, the financial impact for the current year twenty two, twenty three. And the, again, the nine percent ongoing, the cost is about one million. And the health and welfare cap increase for this year is about thirty four thousand nine hundred twenty. And then the other compensation is the left. It's the basically, it's the balance of the one percent. Cause the cost of one percent from MMA is about a hundred seventeen thousand. And that makes the package of ten percent for this year. And the next year, it's just a slight increase because we have step column increase for certain employees. And then the nine percent will have an impact on that and the same thing for the year after. And also we have already included this projection in our sec- second intro. So. At the bottom, you will see and is already included in our budget. And so this is the financial disclosure for MMA. I know we're asking the board to approve this and all accept it tonight.
Thank you, Wendy. Um, Scott, are there a couple of comments?
We have no public comment at this time.
Is there a motion?
We shouldn't approve the MMA agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion of the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Seeing none, uh, motion carries. Thank you, uh, team. Thank you MMA, um, for your support.
President Maron today.
Absolutely.
So I would like to point out that we have thirty three of our sixty five managers here tonight. And I want to thank each of them plus the thirty three who may be watching by YouTube or waking up in the morning. To see the board's action and I would, um. Just like to appreciate all of the work that they do each day and especially the extreme. Weight that they carried, that you carried on your shoulders through COVID. And COVID, we're just now coming out of that. So that means for the last three years, the extra. Burdens of testing, keeping kids spaced. Answering concerns from parents and now dealing as we heard from our mental health team. Dealing with the fallout of students missing on the, missing out on those very important transitional years for socialization. I know that each of you has, is very tired and, um. I, you didn't need to be here tonight necessarily, but I just appreciate that you are because it's just. Just looking at you, you're, you're our team. You're the people who are on the front lines, helping to support our teachers and our classified team members. Along with all the parents and the learners and you really do carry the weight of the district. Or those of you here at the dais as well and you over there sitting there with the video screen. Uh, it's just, I just can't express enough how much I appreciate each of you and I thank you board for. Extending to the team the same as we had for, um. C S C A and also MTA. And I know as we heard from the demographer, uh, that we have a quite, uh. Quite a lot to overcome as far as our budget concern goes for the next three years. And I know that together, all of us, um, just as we did, uh, with the surge, that all of us will come together and figure out. A way that we can mitigate the year three outlook together. So. We will definitely have something for you, um, in the near future. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan. And we can take a five, two minute break. I know that, um, everybody's been sitting for a very, very long time and we'll get, we'll get wrapped up very shortly. Thank you, everyone. And we can take a five, two-minute break. I know that, um, everybody's been sitting for a very, very long time and we'll get, we'll get wrapped up very shortly. Thank you, everyone. Are we good? Item seventeen A two, screw up the end source well biz for the M U S D Innovation Campus Furniture, Assistant Superintendent Business Services.
Yes, good evening. Again, you see, we have this, um, uh, uh, exciting audience sit here. This is their chart. And, um, as, uh, our superintendent, Jordan, shared earlier in her presentation, the innovation campus, we're ready for the move this summer. And furniture is a big deal. And I, I have to say, and Kelly in our bond and, uh, uh, contract manager has spent lots of time and energy working with the different vendors. And we had a committee. And she is our furniture expert now. So I'm gonna turn it over to Kelly. She prepared a short presentation and we'll go over the slides. And tonight we're asking the board to approve, uh, the best for our furniture so we can move forward process. So Kelly?
Alrighty, so furniture selection for the new innovation campus. So we started this process back in August of last year with Q K A, our architects. They saw our site, saw what we needed. What they did is they put together some furniture boards together for us so we can see newer furniture of what could go in these spaces, what we might be able to use, you know, something new, some, something innovative, something different. And because they recently built a new folia building at Fremont Union High School District, they also brought us over there to check out the space so we can kind of see what type of furniture might fit in here. So during this process, they helped us put the bid together. We asked them to incorporate into the bid that we use P existing piggyback bids. So that way we can get the highest, um, percentage discount as possible on our furniture purchase. So on January tenth, we released bids, we advertised the bids twice so we can get a nice wide variety of vendors submitting bids. Um, during this month-long process, vendors were able to come back to us and ask any clarifying questions for any of this, for this bid process. And then on February second, we received seven bids, um, from various vendors. And our furniture committee group, which consisted of staff from the district office, Calaveras Hills, Adult Ed, we got together and reviewed all of the bids that we received. And from those seven bids, we reduced it down to four vendors to see what they had. So we reached out to K I, One Workplace, Office Depot and School Specialty. We reached out to them and we're like, hey, we want to see some furniture locally. So we can kind of play with it, see what's there. And so they brought us to a couple of sites. For example, we went to San Jose City College. We went to Zap, which is a private entity to see some cubicles. And we also went to One Workplace so we can see all the furniture there. With me, I have Yvonne Sigamera with the district office, and she's gonna discuss about how we visited sites and got to see everything.
Thanks, Kelly. I will have to commend my colleague Kelly. She's done an amazing job putting together this presentation and working hard on ensuring that our, our new district campus and innovative, um, innovation campus is going to look amazing. Uh, we had the pleasure of visiting San Jose City College. Um, and it was great to see like the furniture in real life and testing out to see what would be conducive to the learning environment for the students, um, at the high school level, as well as looking at the furniture that would also be conducive to our staff members as we transition into the new workplace. Um, we were guided by K I, brought us over there, and we appreciate the personalized tour and seeing how the furniture, um, differed from the environment, uh, from conference spaces, uh, to learning spaces together as, um, colleagues and staff together, uh, cubicles to then offices. Um, so we're really excited in terms of the selections that have been made. And the furnitures were delivered. If you've seen inside our two hundred wing building, the chairs have been out there. I will personally say I took a chair and tried it out for a full day, and that was part of my feedback as well. We wanted to really make sure that decisions that we were making, um, was going to be reflective of our innovative vision here in Milpitas Unified School District. Um, and they can withstand the next twenty years.
Thank you. And so as Yvonne mentioned, that we did have sample furniture delivered, so all four vendors dropped off so much furniture. So, for example, we got a bunch of conference tables, folding conference tables that we are able to test out. Calaveras Hills staff played with them to make sure that, hey, are they sturdy enough for our high school students? Are they easy to move? And for staff too, are they easy to move, especially if we get, when we have to rearrange for, uh, meetings? We received full-size STEM tables. They're sitting in building six hundred. Wait, this is only a portion of chairs that we received. This is all in building six hundred, a lot of office chairs and conference chairs. This doesn't even show you the student furniture we received. All the testing. We had students testing out stuff. We had staffs testing out stuff. And in this picture alone, all the bright sticky notes that you see taped to the furniture, so that it's so I know where to return all this furniture to. This picture itself has eight items in there from various vendors. And that's only one classroom. Can you imagine the rest of the classroom at Calaveras Hills with the amount of samples that we received? So the students were very hands-on in this process. Um, Adult Ed also tested out furniture, so I know their students are very excited for next year and the brand-new campus and the furniture. Scott, can you play the film? Um, it's linked to the last testing. And so this is a couple of comments from our Calaveras Hill students, um, from their furniture testing.
Hi, I'm Jayden. I'm sixteen years old and I go to Caldills. And I really like this desk because it goes up and down, so I can have standing desk or a sitting desk, whatever I want. It's a really smooth, uh, tabletop so that it doesn't have that weird texture that some of our other tables have. And I liked it so much, much that I tried to look for it online so I can buy one for myself at home. And one day when I came back to class, it was gone. And I was so disappointed because I really liked that desk. I had formed an emotional bond to it. So when I got back to the regular desks, I was like, it was like losing your parents or something. You know, I was so sad. So I really like these desks.
Hello, my name is Ruby. I'm a senior in high school and I like this chair because it's easily movable and you can take it anywhere. And we tasted, we tested this chair out in Mrs. Class. And I like that it's comfortable because it doesn't hurt your back.
My name is Leslie and I'm a sophomore. I like this chair because I slouch a lot and this chair has a curve to it, so I'm not slouching in class. So I don't hurt my back. And these chairs also go up and down.
Calaveras Hills High School would like to thank the Milpitas Unified School District for such an active role in the furniture selection process.
So as you can see, it's not just administrators making decisions. A lot of the staff were included in getting their feedback and learning what they enjoyed and liked about this furniture. So that, that one desk that the student loved, we are getting some for the new campus. Uh, these are gonna be height, height adjustable individual desks that students can use in the classrooms. So that'll be fun. That'll be different. Now with me today are, are three vendors that we have decided to proceed with, which are K I, Office Depot and One Workplace. So let me introduce them so they can introduce their companies. First up would be K I from, uh, Bridget from K I.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. Uh, my name is Bridget E. Rod, and I'm with Kruger International, which is K I. And so Milpitas in the past has utilized our K I product. As you can see, it's right here in front of you. I think that was from the last bond and that was, uh, five years ago. So y'all have a, a history with utilizing K I. And I am the manufacturer's rep. We are an open line. And what that means to you is you can buy K I products through a dealer or you can buy direct through K I, the manufacturer. Um, and we let the, we let the client make the decision on how they'd like to purchase our products. We're one of the leaders in, uh, K twelve in education. And we have some of the high-designed innovative products and solutions out there for numerous districts that we've been able to implement. Um, and so it was really exciting to hear that we had an opportunity to bid on, uh, your innovation campus. Do you have any questions?
How many years have you been in business?
Uh, K I has been in business since nineteen fifty-two. And so there, everything's made in the USA. Um, and it's out of Green Bay, Wisconsin. And so kind of pretty much what I love about being a manufacturer's rep is I'm able to control the, the, uh, delivery and the install, right? So we work from the day you want it installed back. And so that's usually a pretty good fit. And we utilize multiple contracts. And we work with numerous K twelve, uh, districts all over the United States.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next will be Matt and Guy from Office Depot.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Matt Phillips with Office Depot. We're actually O D P Business Solutions. Uh, Office Depot is our sister company, actually, but, um, and I'm part of the Workspace Interiors Division, which is basically a local contract furniture dealership where we have our own designers and project managers right here in the, the Bay Area. And Guy LaSaba-Tare is actually our main point of contact. He's the account manager, your main point of contact for all the different products and services that we have at O D P Business Solutions. If you want to say something, you just hop right in. So let me just say that, um, we've enjoyed, um, ongoing business with the district for many years, over twenty years. Myself, I've been in the contract furniture industry for twenty-five years. Um, but we're a main school supplier and office supplier. And then there's other categories as well, but those are two of the, the largest volume, you know, items and categories that we do for the district. It's a very strong and dynamic partnership with a lot of interaction, not only with staff at the district office, but at the sites as well. Um, it is our pleasure to be able to respond to, by, by the way, a very complex and robust R F P. Um, it was huge and very detailed. And, um, we appreciated it. We were, we were glad that we had the opportunity to participate, but it was a lot of work. And our staff put a tremendous amount of time analyzing that R F P and really coming back with solutions that we think are gonna help the learners, um, at the sites and of course, the staff as well. Um, we wanted to mention that, um, the way that we approach a project like this is relatively simple. I would say that we approach it with the aim that we want the furniture to be safe, which means it needs to be comfortable, it needs to be ergonomic, but we also want it to have an aesthetic that's exciting. And we want that to bring energy into the workplace and into the learning place. That's kind of just our vision for a project like this one. Uh, lastly, I just want to mention that, um, this contract, that's what's actually come before the board, is the Omni region for a contract. And, um, the district actually already uses one of the contracts underneath the Omni agreement, which is a competitive, excuse me, a competitively bid agreement has already been, um, accepted by the district before, but we're particularly, um, bringing forth just the furniture contract underneath. accepted by the district before, but we're particularly um bringing forth just the furniture contract underneath the Omni Region Four Contract. Any notes?
Well, what I want to do is, first of all, please go ahead.
No, Mike.
No, no, Mike.
Oh, pardon me. Um yeah, I wanted to thank Milpitas Unified School District for the opportunity, but I really wanted to mention thanking Kelly because this is one of the biggest projects I've ever seen in the valley and it's, it's big. I know the kind of work that went into it, so I I particularly want to thank you for that. That's a lot of work. It's not done.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and from workplace, we have Hosway, uh Josh, and TJ.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to present uh today and uh or this evening, uh One Workplace. So we are uh the Steelcase uh distributor for uh Northern California. And uh I represent, uh our team represents uh the Learning Environments Group within One Workplace. Thirty uh people uh serving ed and clients, uh K-12, community college, higher ed throughout uh Northern California, worked with many uh districts, have the opportunity uh in the past to work with uh Milpitas. And uh we look forward to the opportunity to work with you again. Uh Hosway Garcia is your account manager. Uh he's been working with Kelly throughout this process and has worked with the district uh quite a number of years uh before as well, familiar with your account and uh your, your district and your schools. Um Josh Niederman has been involved in the process. He's worked with uh QKA and uh is our market development manager for our Learning Environments Group. So uh we're really excited about the opportunity. We uh, this, all we do is education within our group. Uh One Workplace is a pretty good-sized company, uh but we are small enough within our group to give you kind of the localized service uh that you uh would expect. Uh we are committed to excellence in, in what we do in the marketplace. Uh and we also are local. We have, you know, it's a local family-owned business. We have our own warehousing. We have our own installation crew, no outside third parties. And so we're, we're integrated in such a way that we can deliver that, that high quality of service that you've come to expect and also representing Steelcase. Uh it's a product that's, it's built to last, so it'll last that twenty-year period that you're, that you're talking about. So anyway, um we appreciate the opportunity and any questions?
You guys are Montague Expressway?
We so, so I, yes, uh so good question. We, we were right here and we're um incorporated here actually in the city of Milpitas. Um around eight years ago or so, we changed locations and we're on Adela Cruz Boulevard, right by the airport in, in Santa Clara. So it's technically in Santa Clara. And uh it's over a hundred-year-old a company. I want to add that um TJ referenced Milpitas and our history with Milpitas Unified School District dating over ten years. So many of the schools that were mentioned today were schools that we helped under, not the, just the previous bond, but the previous, previous bond. Um and really pride ourselves in innovative environments for young children and, and, and young adults. And um and took a lot of pride in those spaces that we partnered with the district on creating. At the time, it was extremely innovative um in learning environments across the entire country, actually. And we hope that this high school will be a, a real symbol of innovation, uh as the name suggests, uh it for the interiors as well as obviously the building itself.
Since the pandemic, how has furniture design for K-12 changed, if at all?
Yeah, yeah, I can answer uh what I've seen. I, I think it, it really depends on the district um with which we're engaged in terms of how, how receptive they are to changes. Um we are seeing a greater use of outdoor spaces and an interest in outdoor learning environments more so now than ever before. My great-grandmother founded a school called the Presidio Open Air School in San Francisco in nineteen eighteen, built around outdoor education. So this is not a new concept. Um but I, there's obviously a much renewed focus, not just for uh young children that you heard of earlier today. Um but people of all ages were seeing that in the workplace as well. Uh so I'd say outdoor uh and a focus on outdoors. Um particularly given the climate that we're in here in Northern California with so much. This year notwithstanding, uh a vast majority of days of the year having sunshine. It's, it's a, it's a no-brainer for a lot of districts to focus more on their outdoor environments and utilizing that real estate for learning. Uh it, and I would say also what, what other changes there is.
I obviously help in, in well, uh wellness, mental wellbeing.
You've heard about that today.
Related to that, um we've seen that since the pandemic.
Yeah, there's a huge focus on uh not just counseling rooms and counseling spaces, um but also areas with zones within even classrooms that focus on uh rejuvenation, restoration. Um we, you heard about the need for quiet space during the talk earlier. Um uh and for children to be able to recharge and decompress. Uh so there's a lot more focus that we're seeing in our practice, built around designing spaces that can uh and implementing uh spaces that can cater to those needs.
So the manufacturing of your product, how eco-friendly or climate, you know, we got all these climate things that are going on and we want to start to put, to do a better job of protecting the environment. How does your company uh view or do work in that area?
Yeah, it's an industry leader in terms of sustainability and the environment. We have a lot of statistics that I can provide to you, Kelly, uh that you can pass on to the board. Uh Steelcase is the, for example, the, the number-one manufacturer. It's the leading manufacturer of educational furniture across the country. Furniture in general across the country, but there's a lot of work that we've done, um you know, to, to, to be an industry leader in sustainability. I don't have that information here with me, uh President Norwood, but, but I will pass that along to the board.
Awesome. Any other questions from the board? Scott, any other public comments?
Uh no public comment at this time.
Okay.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Kelly, for uh such a great and a nice presentation. And also thank you uh for staying all, all the way and until this, you know, and so border, we're asking you tonight to accept those bids, so we can move forward.
Your motion.
Move to approve the bids.
Uh we have motion to approve the bids. There are second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? All those in favor? I, any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Good, I just also wanted to thank Kelly. Uh she's done a tremendous job uh corralling uh the opinions and supporting like classified staff, certificated staff, students, teachers, like there's just a range of opinions and we've all got them. And you've held them and, and you've worked really hard to, to try and put this together. Um and I really appreciate that. You've always been very solution-oriented and always smiling while receiving all of our many, many comments about the different types of chairs. So thank you.
It's been fun.
Yeah, I think we should have gave a big round of applause.
Kelly, thank you.
And Kelly, I would just like to add that your slide deck is a model for others. Thank you.
Didn't Kelly win someone award recently?
Yes, she, she is our Axe um uh Manager of the Year.
Yeah.
Right?
Excellent carries. Thank you, Kelly.
Awesome. Uh item seventeen uh B one.
B one. Um so this is uh requesting approval for a revision to the board policy. And as we heard earlier, um this evening, we got some really great candid feedback from parents on how we can continue to improve um our communication and collaboration with them around before and after-school programs. Um the policy changes here to the, to the board policy, um fifty-one forty-eight point two. Uh the changes are mostly reflecting um updates because of the ELOP programming. Uh so it's a lot of just changes around verbiage from learning opportunities that really focus on extending the school day. Um each program, what we are required to do as a district. And then um as we, the, the main focus in the shift in language is around expanding the learning opportunities beyond, beyond the school year. So one of the aspects of that is the school day. And so I invite you to review this and then um to approve it.
So we put the board policy over the screen?
Yes.
Uh well, Scott keeps scrolling through that. Um question for you, Executive Director Jahari. Um obviously, there was confusion as far as the after-school, we're going with after the bell. Um as far as naming this particular policy for the expanded learning opportunity, is there a different terminology that we can use to differentiate the offering or do, are we required to keep it under that based on um the uh regulation or rule?
That's really interesting question. Um I would need to look into that a little bit, but I actually like your train of thinking on, on being able to differentiate what is the after-school programming and then where are we also providing options for after-care? Um and I think that might be a way to also um, a way for us to think about how we advertise and support and differentiate what the programming is.
Absolutely, because uh as we saw from the presentation you made beforehand, um that there is a, a higher benefit as far as the, the expanded learning opportunity for the student that participates in that program versus something like after-school care um that some of these other vendors.
Right, they serve different needs, so I think I.
That would help to differentiate as, as far as the level of servicing with costs.
Yeah, excellent suggestion.
Thank you.
So I would request that we look at that suggestion and include in this policy, um um there is an after-school program and there's after-school care. And I'm not clear, based on because early on, one of the things that caught my attention in this um proposed policy, if you scroll back up, is the um elimination of quite a bit of the required or the engagement of each, each program offered by the district shall be planned through a collaborative process that includes. So all that parent, guardian, students, representatives is scratched out as required by law. So are we saying that that information, those ed codes that you identify includes that information or does not?
Believe that it does, but I can go back and look at that. Um and I'm wondering if some of the suggestions you're making and I'll defer to Superintendent Jordan here, if some of the more specifics actually come in the ARs or what would live in the board policy in the AR?
Administrative regulation or the detailed uh um implementation of a policy. Um what you have here is this, the recommendation from CSBA for changes in the board policy that are there because of changes in the law.
Correct.
So then does that mean that the law no longer requires the parts that are outlined, that are aligned through?
I, I think it just doesn't spell it out in like specific detail the same way. I, I, I mean, good practice is still us collaborating there and, and I think we also got feedback on how our practices can improve.
I would suggest, um because a lot is generally like a floor that you have, in, in some cases, you look at a law as to what the floor is, the minimal of what an entity has to do. And the entity can always go above that. And so based on um feedback that we have, I would recommend that we do not scratch out the part that says that includes parents, guardians, students, representatives of participating schools.
Okay. So I'm happy to take this back. Um the, is there additional feedback as I take this back?
I um, if that's the only change, if there's other changes, I think that the board could, unless there are other changes, I think that the board could act to approve with that uh revision, that we not line through the part that says that includes parents, guardians, students, representatives of participating schools.
Yep.
Any comments on that from the board? And we continue to scroll through. We scroll, Scott. Yeah, probably want to look at this one a little bit deeper because some of the language that I'm seeing there is is changing the definition in um more towards the ELOP um type of environment. There um versus recognizing after-school care and ELOP, which are obviously two different things, but they do uh include uh the ACES in the twenty-first century, which in many, which a number of communities um are more after-school care than they are um you know, more expanded learning programs. So I'm, 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 I'm not sure if there is something about after-school care separate as far as a proposed, uh as far as a new policy uh separate from this one, because this one seems more tailored toward the ELOP uh versus some of the things that we offer today.
I, I think that's accurate. This is geared towards ELOP. Um so I think perhaps.
Appears to eliminate and it appears to, it's care to move the um the intention from after-school care to after-school program that's run by the district or supported by the district.
Right, and it identifies for whom the fee must be waived. Um so I, it sounds like we, there's more discussion that we want to have on this topic. Yeah, yeah.
I think so. I, I mean, my feedback would be, I, I will actually, I, I, I understand the, the structure. We're kind of following the, the current um uh policy. I think maybe this is kind of along what Chris is looking for. No, I would love to see kind of this definition for the extended learning opportunities. But I would also like to see an equivalent uh definition uh similar to in this particular structure uh for the after-school. Uh, for the after school care. Because then that, in my mind, makes it clear that, and, and that may be above and beyond what others guys are doing. Um, but that, from my perspective, we're M U S D, we, we do that, right? So um, so in my mind, I, I like to see that differentiation. I like to maybe perhaps see the two sections. One really targeted to ELOP and the other one uh towards care.
I think we asked me to understand why is the, like, what is the intention behind the law? And how, how it's creating a need to change board policy? Because as I look at that last paragraph on page two, which is not being changed, so that must, that is based on the ed code. That's not changed. And it actually says that students in ages eleven to twelve. Shall be placed in before after school programs if one available instead of childcare and developmental services. So I think that in light of what's happening in our context. That's really important for us to understand the why behind these uh ed code changes and then also implications for the board policy. So uh staff and I will go back and. Um, find out answers to that.
Uh, Superintendent Jordan, she bring up an interesting point in reading that someone could misconstrue that as being required to. Go to the yellow program versus the subsidized childcare and for that particular parent that came. That would be a huge cost increase if again, they determine that that language says they're required.
Or they wouldn't be allowed.
Correct. So to that point, there is a, a little bit of work, right?
Yep.
To clarify some of these points.
Okay, um, with that said, um, is there a motion uh to approve? They re- revisions to the board policy by four, five one four eight dot two before after school programs.
I, I guess I should pull it before you make the motion to say we need to do some more work, no?
We'll do.
Yeah.
We'll do a motion and then I'll listen. And I hear no second. And then the motion dies.
Okay.
Then that. That allows Scott to do his thing. And then that allows us to move forward with um bringing it back.
Sounds good, thank you.
With my superintendent recommendation, thank you. Uh, superintendent's item uh seventeen. See uh one, adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dot twenty twenty-three dot thirty-one. Recognizing and honoring April as Autism Acceptance Month, the highlight of the evening. Should have tried to figure out now on that, that we didn't do that at the beginning when we had a full house. Sergeant, you gotta help me out on that one next time.
All right. Well, I did tell them to listen later in the, in the meeting, so hopefully they're all looking at it either tonight. Or they're gonna go back and review it on the board highlights. So yes, this evening, um, we are bringing forth. Uh, our Autism Acceptance Month um Board Resolution. We've done that for a few years now. Um, as I mentioned in my opening remarks tonight, um, I'm really proud of our students who. Uh, uh, are in our post-secondary class who uh put together this uh reading of our board resolution. Um, and then I'll just highlight the closing of it. And thank you to Scott for actually putting all the pieces of the videos together to make it. Um, and then the closing tonight, you might want to just take a piece of, uh, take a peek at the final slide. Where the entire uh post-secondary group uh says thank you. From the uh new Life Lab Kitchen. Go ahead, Scott.
Resolution twenty twenty-three point thirty-one. Recognizing and honoring April as Autism Acceptance Month. Whereas autism is a developmental difference that typically manifests during the first few years of an individual's life. Regardless of race, color, and socio-economical factors and results. From a different type of neurological wiring that affects social cognitive and communication function. Whereas the differences range widely in each individual and are as unique as every person's neurological. Design. The difference is understood as a disability in today's mainstream society, largely built by neurotypical individuals.
Now, autism communities call on the media and succeed to move from user awareness to as- acceptance. This April in order to foster change and inclusive for those affected by autism. Delayable awareness and exception of autism have explained tremendously since the ninety seventies. When the focus was on fine occur today, the using a Friday event based in practice has resulted in. Occasional and behavioral success of many individual with autism. As a result, many adults with autism leave independent and successful lives as compared to the ninety seventies.
Whereas in fall of twenty twenty, the Centers for Disease Control of Prevention, CDC reported that. Approximately one in fifty-four children in the US was diagnosed with autism. This number seems to be on the rise due to higher awareness and increased testing in the early developmental basis. Of eventual life, which allows for earlier intervention. Whereas young adults with autism are less likely to continue their education past secondary school. And thirty-five percent do not have a job or receive postgraduate education after leaving high school. Due to lack of adequate integration support. Very few colleges and universities have established on campus programs with nary diverse students. Once they are enrolled, offering academic support as well as assistance with life skills to ease their adjustment to college life.
Whereas individuals with autism often require a lifetime of. Specialized and community support services to ensure their health, safety, and well-being. Families need support with the psychological and economic challenges. That autism presents, including seclusion, isolation. And segregation from mainstream society.
Whereas the US Department of Justice has reported that the rate of violent crimes against people with developmental and other disabilities. Is doubled as compared to people without disabilities. Individuals diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder may be at a higher risk.
Where, whereas when you. Get to pro- participate in process and stay completed with their family. Friends and neighbors, they were from their spheres who seem has to stay in several support. And also has.
Programs.
Women knows to help them with social skills and communication. They buy. Very day for life of visiting and we've spent within the covered it.
Well, inclusion and acceptance is the center of our culture of we in this. Ironically, at the hand of, of a heart will of our students and makes us a wonderful time to harness awareness now. And insularity of society expecting people who are different. What matter is her, their difference is.
Therefore, be it result that repairs unified school district hereby. Pro climbs the month of April two thousand and twenty of autism expert tenders. Must and encourage our educates to celebrate this occasion with a. Pride. Simmons activities and programs fostering integration and inclusion. Had an adopted by the Milpitas U F R I. Through the spirit of education as a we held on April eighteen. Twenty-three by the foreign vote.
That's awesome. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Um, is there a motion?
Make the motion.
We have a motion and is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
That's fantastic.
Hmm hmm, yeah.
Thank you for all the different, showing all the different students. And in the uh post-secondary uh life skills lab, which, you know, um, we've never had one. And we got that done. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none, the best motion of the night carries. Item eighteen consent items. Consent items are considered routine and will be acted upon by the board in one, one motion. There's no discussion on these items prior to the motion unless members of the board, staff, or public request. That specific items be tabled or removed for discussion or correction. Scott, is there any public comment?
Uh, we have no public comment at this time.
Awesome. Um, board, are there any items to be tabled or removed? With that said, is there a motion?
Move to approve the consent items.
We have a motion to approve the consent items. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Scott, did you connect correctly? Who got the, who got the second in there?
I, I had a new.
Okay, a new by new, alright. Yeah, motion the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, any opposed? Any abstained? Uh, seeing none, motion carries. Item nineteen future of board, uh, dates of future board meetings. May ninth with a study session, closed session, and open session. May twenty-third, study session, closed session, and open session. Um, any additional announcements or reminders? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
I just wanted to do a shout out. Mipta's still seeking uh as parents to be a part of our uh board. And so I just wanted to do a shout out that uh if anybody is interested to reach out to me or David Flashner. Or Robert Jung um as well, so thank you.
Thank you for that. Um, yeah, we gotta get that one figured out. It's an important part of the work that we do. Um, and with that, um, there are any no, no additional announcements? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Any abstaining?